Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular. And I'm the guy with the speaker on my laptop this time. There we go. Welcome to a regular meeting of council for Wednesday, May 22, 2024. It's 6:02 PM. And I like to call the meeting in order. I'll just recognize that councillor Downer sends his regrets. Other than that, we have a full house, including councillor East in the house. Welcome back councillor East. So I'd like to start with our traditional land acknowledgement. The town of Midland recognizing that it's located on land, which is traditional and treaty territory of the Nishnabik people now known as the Chipewa Tri Council comprised of Bozle First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within pre-confederation treaty five and treaty 16 and included within the Williams Treaties of 1923. The town of Midland recognizes us located on land, which is traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homelands of the Maiti, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. I now like to deliver the following safety message. Shouldn't have any problems. We pretty much have the entire fire department in the back of the hall here. Should the fire alarm activate, see them? And exit the room in an orderly fashion and proceed to the evacuation assembly area, which is located in the upper parking lot. You can exit through the main entrance point to double glass doors, make immediate left and proceed out the front doors or through the secondary exit back here. Up the stairs and check the door for heat before opening up its safe exit on the second floor, turn right and proceed out the door in front of you. Washrooms are located on the second floor to the left of the seating area, and an elevator is located just outside the main entrance. As Midland has a respectful workplace policy, anyone exhibiting violent or harassing behavior will be asked to leave. For anyone requiring hearing assist devices, please advise a clerk and she'll arrange with our IT staff and provide you with the device. Council meetings are recorded via Zoom and are posted on the town's YouTube site. The message meetings are also broadcast on Rogers TV Midland Channel 53 when available. With that, I'd like to just call for a moment of silent reflection before we kick into night's beefy agenda. Thank you very much. Council item three on our agenda is declarations of conflict of interest. You've seen the agenda tonight. Are there any councillors that like to declare a conflict of interest? Any matters? Seeing seeing none. If something arises, you just have to put your hand up, notify us at the time and file a requisite paperwork clerk at the time. So next I have. Peritable the agenda moved by councillor McDonald, seconded by deputy mayor Prost. The contents of the regular council agenda for May 22, 2024 be approved as amended. And those amendments are that the rules of procedure be suspended to allow council to go into a closed session to receive a confidential update from staff with respect to agenda item 5.4.11 CSR 2024-54 Little Lake Park Stage and Banshell Construction Project. Prior to any discussion of that staff report and that portion at that portion of the meeting be closed to the public pursuant to section 239 of Municipal Act 2001 as indicated. Section 239 2E is the rationale litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrator tribunals affecting municipality or local board. And section 239 2I, a trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which if disclosed could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly a competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual other negotiations of a person, group, a person's organization. And so just to boil that down, bottom line is we have an open RFP for an amazing bench shell installation. And we're still in a blackout period and we're not at liberty to show and tell at this point yet. And we are will be debating a matter later tonight about this going a bit over budget. So we're going to go in camera and rather than kicking all of you out, we're going to wander upstairs and do that hopefully quickly. And then return to the meeting after, but this wasn't advertised on our agenda, just came up after the fact, which is why it is an amendment. So there's the high level English version of what's going on. So council, that being said, any comments or questions about that amendment? All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Next move by councillor Ball, seconded by councillor Patel, that the items and related recommendations contained within the May 22, 2024 consent agenda as consent items having been considered by council be adopted with the exception of the following reports that were pulled for discussion later. Item 5.4.1 CSR 2024-44 NSSRC user fees. Item 5.44 CSR 2024-47 fireworks bylaw. Item 5.4.7 CSR 2024-50 collection of boat launch fees. Item 5.4.9 CSR 2024-52 Sixth Street Parking Review. And item 5.411 CSR 2024-54 Little Lake Park Stage and Banshell Construction Project, including the closed session that we just spoke about to take place prior to that discussion, which will all be considered under section 12.0 reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for councils consideration, including presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. That being said, there still is other stuff on our consent agenda that we're about to pass en masse. And before I do so, I'll open the floor up to any comments, questions or anything else about the consent agenda. Councillor Meredith.
I just have a comment on the Butter Tart Festival. I don't think that one was pulled. Is that correct? And it was a great report, quite lengthy, and a lot of time was spent. I can see that, so I figured it would have been pulled. The one question I had is I see that a second day is is pretty much not feasible, but for it to extend into the evening. I thought possibly that would be the direction that a recommendation would come in since we were already set up. Whether it was entertainment, something like, you know, party on the dock when we had it could could be a nice, you know, ending to a great day. So just wondering the feasibility on that, if 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 that would pose, I know you you said if a second day was there, we'd have to hire another staff member and so forth, but can you just comment on on that? Thank you.
To the Chair to councillor Meredith, yes, if council wanted to see an event on this Saturday evening or on the Sunday, we would require an additional staff to help organize that and as well as a budget for that activity. We can present some some proposals, some ideas throughout the budget process if you like.
Thank you. So even if it was in the center of that one day, we'd have to have another staff member. Thank you.
Well.
Thank you. I was actually under the impression that we were going to maybe put it out saying, do you have an event idea? And approaching the town with that idea. I know that you said you reached out to a few like not for profit type organizations. They probably don't have the funds to be able to run a large scale event like that. I guess in the report, I was just kind of confused why that didn't come back. Is there a reason why we didn't put that out to the community saying, is there an event that we can help work with you? Because I think that that's the roadblock we're getting at is people are expected to apply for special events permits, but there's nothing actually that we're saying we, how can we help you run an event? How can we support you?
Through the Chair to councillor Ball. If third party event organizer wants to have an event on municipal property, we can't be involved with the day to day organizing of that event. However, if you want to see an event where the town organized it and we brought in community partners such as not for profit organizations, that's a possibility. We would require a budget for that and a staff person to help coordinate that. I spoke with a variety of not for profit organizations. They just don't have the capacity. Some also. They don't find that their event, they don't want it to be a tag on to the Butter Tart Festival. They prefer to be a standalone event. That's their intent with that, their event.
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe clarify if we're saying to the community, we are looking at adding a second day onto Butter Tart Festival. The street is already closed down. We already have the fencing setup. Do you have an event at night that you would like to run based off all of these things already being set up? Because we're going to take it down eventually at the end of the day. But if it's already set up, that eliminates some of the costs for a third party that may not be able to run an event with that additional cost added to it. So that's what I was hoping with working with events is saying, this is what we have to offer. Can you bring an event to us? We don't necessarily need a staff person to organize their event. I'm just saying we could work in collaboration with them and at least allow the community to know that that we're thinking about that. Not, I guess, adding an additional day onto butter test with Butter Tart Festival with only our events. I thought the consensus was that we were going to try and reach out to that. So I was just confused not receiving that back.
The Chair to councillor Ball. The report was the feasibility of running the Butter Tart Festival as a two day event and the cost associated with that. That's the the report that I presented to council. If a third party event wanted to do something on the street, we could certainly help cost that. We could bring it to council, say how much this it would. We would have to contribute to their event. We'd have to have staff available that night, especially for operations if we're keeping the road closure in place.
Thanks. So maybe that's an opportunity between now and budget time for us to kind of beat the bushes and, you know, see our own promotional channels. Is there anybody that would like to take advantage of the fact that the streets closed? And that the town is all set up for a big show? People just packed up and left with their butter tart leftovers and perhaps something else can can come into play and it could be a service level enhancement, if you will, that we offer up at budget time. Whether it's more staff or just more money for part times or something. So we have time. Certainly, yeah, councillor Meredith.
Just one quick question. Would the BIA be considered a third party?
Yes, through the Chair to councillor Meredith, they they are considered a third party event organizer in our, under our special event policy. However, they are given priority in their events that they're looking to host in the town.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments about, I got a couple on here, just calling out things that weren't pulled out. So Midland Public Library is going to be hosting the Midland Movies in the Park again. And that's a good collaboration between the library and the town. There's in kind services from the town. So that'll be down at the Rotary Stage this summer, and we have our new new seating involved and they have their blow up screen, and I think the town provides projector and power and speakers and whatnot. So there's a bunch of really good movies that are being shown this summer. That'll be posted and promoted by Midland Public Library will co promote it through the town channels. So stay tuned for that. So that's kind of just being improved automatically tonight through our consent agenda. And what else we got in here? Good stuff. Property tax rates by law. No one wants to hear about that. Wasn't pulled formalities. And if anyone followed along last time, our unsuccessful tax sale, so 742 Birchwood Drive is going to just become town owned property until we come up with something unique to do with it. It's got a few things we want to get sorted out with the land first and come up with a new creative solution. And the storm water, storm water management annual report. It's a big deal. It's one of these things we just received for information. But I do have to call out the consistently amazing effort by the team over at the wastewater and wastewater plant. Not only keep keeping our drinking water clean, but also cleaning our our leftover water. And the fact that they consistently get top score and top marks. And, you know, there's a lot of money that goes into that building and that facility and all the science that goes on there. And there will need to be more money injected to keep that place running and keep it going. But these reports that we get, they're a long read, a good read, and they really just validate all the good work that's done over there. I mean, all of our, all of our staff and departments are incredible, but I always like to remind people the safe drinking water is one of those things where we all go to jail up here. If we fail in our duty to make sure that it's safe and clean and they're funded properly and trained properly and staff properly. It's, there's just no, no forgiving. You know, making a misstep with our drinking water. So kudos to the team over there. And I think the rest of it, we're going to be talking about as the night goes on. So council. We've got this on the floor to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Moving right along, moved by councillor Meredith, seconded by councillor Bald, that council resolve into the committee of the whole. All those in favor? The opposed? That is carried. I'll pass the chair over to Deputy Mayor.
That was fast. Sorry, I have a lot here, so I just want to set this up so I'm not moving around constantly and then I can still see. That should work. Okay, welcome to committee of the whole number seven. If you're following along, public meeting and hearing, there are none. We do have presentations. I'd like to introduce Fire Chief Richard Bernard, who will be presenting 20 year service award to Captain Michael Dubo and Captain Mike, or sorry, Captain Christian Petit to come on up.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. Town directors, citizens and fire department personnel. It is with pleasure that I stand before you this evening to recognize significant milestones for two of our career firefighters. The Governor General of Canada's Fire Service Exemplary Medal was created in 1985. It honors members of the Canadian Fire Service who have completed 20 years of service, 10 of which have been performed in duties of potential risk. Our first recipient this evening is Captain Chris Petit. Captain Petit joined the Canadian Armed Forces in 1985 as a military engineer. He was deployed through several operations overseas, including Bosnia, Yugoslavia and Africa. He worked for the Marine Volunteer Fire Department in Alberta from 1999 to 2001. In 2001, he switched to military firefighting. From 2001 to 2003, Captain Petit worked as a firefighter at CFB Edmonton. In 2003, Captain Petit moved or transferred to CFB Trenton. In 2006, Captain Petit retired from the military and joined the town of Midland Fire Department as a career firefighter. And in 2016, Captain Petit was promoted to captain where he serves today. Our second recipient, firefighter Mike Dubo. Firefighter Dubo is a fourth generation firefighter. For over 108 years, the Dubo family have had firefighters working either in Penetang Machine or the town of Midland. The Dubo family have had brothers, fathers, grandfathers and sons serve in the fire department in all ranks, including firefighter, captain, deputy chief and fire chief. The Dubo family is also credited for facilitating the restoration of a 1940 antique fire truck that is still used in parades out of Penetang Machine. Firefighter Dubo joined the volunteer fire department in Penetang Machine in May of 2003. And he joined the Midland Fire Department as a career firefighter in 2016, where he serves today as a senior firefighter. As you can see, both recipients are dedicated professionals committed to their country and the community they live in. Is with great pleasure that I, surrounded by friends and family and colleagues, present Captain Chris Petit and firefighter Mike Dubo with their Federal Fire Service Exemplary Service Award. Please join me in a round of applause. Like to ask your worship to join me here and I'll ask those firefighters as well to come and join me at the front where we will present the certificates. And if council is able, we can form the the circle behind for our pictures. Thank you.
Okay, well, they've left, but I'm very grateful for all our firefighters. Onto number nine, integrity commissioner, their recommendation reports, there are none. Number 10 deputations petitions, there are none. Committee, local board delegation or memo. I'd like to introduce Inspector Todd Pittman, who is here to update us on the new increased enforcement in the downtown core. I think he might just be outside the door. Welcome Inspector Pittman. You are.
For things that I have to follow up on after, because I think we may have some follow up come out of this meeting. So your worship, would you just like me to go or what's the format here?
Yes, I've already introduced you.
Well, thank you, deputy. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me here tonight. I want to go over our 2023 to 2025 detachment action plan. Fairly briefly, I don't know how much time I have here, but I think it will lead to a bit of a larger discussion around the room on what we're looking for in community and perhaps some of the services we provide as a police service. So there's three main themes that our detachment action plan covers. One is crime, really a focus on addressing and preventing crime in our communities that we police, and that's all five communities. Focus on our waterways, roadways and our trail systems on how we police those types of patrol proactive enforcement. Both ATV vehicle and in our boats and motorized snow vehicles. And lastly, a focus on community wellbeing, which I think is where we'll probably spend some of our time for comments. Specific to crime. So I'll stop after each one to see if there's any comments. Specific to crime, we have a focus on addressing and preventing crime. So really we're looking for a reduction in crime, reduce victimization and positive outcomes in our communities is is what we want through our policing. That's about building maintain, building relationships, maintaining partnerships, including victim services, focusing on intimate partner violence, working with their crown attorneys on prosecutions, probation and parole. Educating youth in our schools is a really big one in the area of of violence, of victimization, promoting awareness as well in the schools. We do have a community services officer that pretty much does that full time. Ensuring that our policies align with ministry guidelines in how we investigate domestics and making sure the right things are done. And working with their community street crimes unit, obviously to target drug violence and monitor monitoring drugs and drug trafficking and drug houses in our communities, which I'm sure we are all very well of, well aware of. Using our auxiliary program for crime prevention and community engagement. And working with our Mcert, so they're formerly known as Cmart. We are actually switching the name as Mcert, which is our mental health crisis response team that is coming in the future. So you may see the banners change on the vest with the clinicians that are out with their officers. And we're looking at utilizing them. So we're going to increase our complement right now. Essentially, we have one officer full time with one Mcert worker. We're looking at taking another officer and putting them out there full time, which should give us some capacity to do some proactive work in community, which I think is going to be essential and very important. And just continuing to deliver crime prevention programs to reduce victimization scams, senior scams, which are actually going up quite a bit right now. You'll see the frauds with the seniors. So that's really our crime prevention focus. And as per the Community Safety and Policing Act, which is now in force and replaced the Police Services Act. As a detachment commander, I am required to consult with each of the municipal councils for the communities that were responsible for policing to get comments back on the on the plan and on what we police. So for crime, is there any comments that you would have focuses, things that you're noticing, things that you could see maybe needing some more focus? I mean, I think drugs are the obvious one in community, but is there anything else?
Go ahead councillor.
Thank you, through your worship. So if maybe we could pay or have a little bit more attention, you know, maybe walking the streets downtown. I know behind, especially the banks. When the owners are leaving their businesses at night, they're being aggressively harassed. I got a call from a local restaurant owner and she was walking out and they were quite aggressively wanting her cell phone. And when she wouldn't give her cell phone and you have to forgive me, I'm trying to still learn how to speak here. They were very violent with her. That the parking lots, especially downtown and up by the Tim Hortons up on the highway are very, very heavily populated with aggression. And unfortunately, it paints an image that the downtown core isn't safe when it really is. It's just there's certain areas that might just need a little bit more attention. I don't know if it's an education to you know, the people causing disturbances. I know that, you know, you have mental issues or addiction issues or many, many different issues that they're facing. But the problem is, is that our store owners are afraid to leave at night. The bank workers are afraid to leave to go to their cars in the parking lots. So the word that I'm receiving from the residents and the workers of the downtown core, especially is that maybe a little bit more police presence, especially during certain times like the mornings, you know, it's challenging because there's a lot of spots that the people tend to hang around, right? But it makes people uneasy and we really want to paint that downtown as safe because it is. It's just certain times that maybe we could have a little bit more police presence. And then once again, those back parking lots, especially when, you know, you're getting out at five, six o'clock. It would just make the business owners and their employees a little bit more easy feeling and maybe our residents a little bit more easy feeling to utilize the downtown services. So that was one thing that was brought to me by many phone calls. So I'll just let you address that. And thank you very much for every OPP serving us.
Thank you very much councillor East. It's good to see you again as well. So it's a bit of a multi faceted issue. So it's a bit of a multi-faceted issue. I think that there is a temporary solution perhaps to to increasing visibility. I am aware that One Community Solutions is being contracted, I believe, by the county SIMCO coming up this way to do some proactive work as well. So I want to say that the OPP will be a willing partner in that and however that looks and however we can target the areas that need that extra patrol. One of the periods that we're coming into right now is one of our busiest periods for us as police. It's the summer. Last year was our busiest, probably most unprecedented summer on in recent history for calls for service, which is something we can't control. But we have an obligation to respond to. So I think in looking at the policing needs of the other four communities as well as Midland, which we do give quite a bit of police services to, and then the need for the extra patrols, I think one of the things that I'm prepared to do and something that I'm prepared to take to the officers is to put out proactive patrols and we could call them community patrols. I think I'd be interested in evidence based. So what are the times that are kind of need to be targeted days of the week or any particularly worse than others? And look to put those out as overtime shifts and staff it. Overtime can be a bit of a trick at times because people look at that and go, oh, increases to my taxes, increase policing costs, increase. Yes and no. So if it's a very busy summer and overtime costs are up just by virtue of the calls for service and the types of calls, then yes, it would be an increase in the overall policing cost. However, if overtime is down because the culture service demand isn't there, then we won't need it as much. And you really won't notice the impact of some extra shifts that we put out there. So I just want to be full, frank and fair about that. I do have an approach to do it. Do I think though it's the long term solution? No, I don't. I don't think it's it's the permanent fix. I know that we are looking at other things as a police service. There's a special constable review right now, for example, that we're looking at how we could utilize special constables and and so can we put them out on patrol? Can we use them for community events? And so we're looking at changing the way that we police and that's being explored right now. So that may be a viable solution as we move down the road as well. I think in working with the One Community Solutions is is going to be, may change things a bit as well. So thank you for that comment, Counselor. I appreciate it.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. I just want to clarify your comment in regards to working with students and I'm curious, are you welcoming to the all the schools with the school boards now?
We are, and I actually learned something very interesting last week about programming. So all of the program programming that we deliver as a police service now has to be pre-approved by the Board of Trustees. So anything that we deliver any messaging program, so for example, we used to do a junior constable promise where we would go in and the students would see their car and we'd give them a little badge and they would make a promise that they would be nice to each other. And it was like, so it was really like a school community event. Those types of things aren't approved right now. We do have some approved programming on cyberbullying. There's a lot of I guess criminality that can happen now in schools with sharing of images, photos through phones. So there's a lot of education that we do in the schools on that. But we are welcome into our public school system and I know that our Catholic school system is entering into discussions on getting us in there more.
Counselor Ball?
Thank you. My question is on clarification of drug houses and I guess what I can do as a council, a counselor in Midland, talking to residents, because I am quite honestly at a loss now. I know that you are very reactive to situations in drug houses. You're there all the time because residents that live beside them tell me that you're there all the time. So my question, I guess, is why are these not shut down? Why are they not? I mean, I get the emails. I see that there's been charges laid, but it's not with every owner of the home. It's not with every resident in the home. So when you're picking people up from these drug houses, they're off, you know, you pick them up at 5:00 AM, they're back selling drugs at 5:00 PM. So what am I supposed to tell residents about that? Am I supposed to lobby for stricter drug laws? I'm just wondering what I'm what I'm supposed to tell residents and how that's being dealt with because I know you're there. I know you're aware. So how, what's the next step forward? How can I make these people that are living beside these houses feel safe? Because we've had residents move out of Midland because of them.
Absolutely. Thanks. Thank you very much for the question, Counselor Ball. So in the last five years, and I gave the statistic with Tate Township, we have laid 22,777 charges as a police service in five years, not necessarily all drug related in total. Forty-five percent of those charges have been withdrawn by the Crown. So a part of our issue, and I'm not blaming the Crowns, I understand that they have struggles in the courts to even get court clerks and court staff to process documents. So there seems to be a systemic issue with the entire system with space in jails. So even though we may want to jail people, there's no space in the jails. And this is a part of the frustration that the community feels and that the police feel with almost this catch and release type of system that's going on. We catch them, we charge them, we hold them for bail and then they're back out again by 5:00 PM selling drugs again on the street. The only thing that I could offer Counselor Ball is that perhaps as a council, one of the things that Penetangasheen Town Council did was they wrote a letter using some of the statistics and I'm happy to provide them to this council as well. Petitioning the Ministry of the Attorney General saying, we need to do better. We need to hold people accountable. Our communities expect it. Our police are out there doing the work. Our citizens deserve it. We deserve to feel safe in our communities and to get behind that. Otherwise, it's still have their report. We will show up. We will do our jobs and arrest. But I think it's going to take a systemic change to fix this problem. It's a broader problem than I think just responding to calls for service. That's one of the ways is we could get together and petition and I think enough voices draw attention.
Thank you. I would I would love the statistics because I know that you're there, that I hear that you're there. So I would like to take it as far as I can to be able to get our residents what they need. And I'm sure that it's frustrating for you as it is for me. So please provide them. I would love to write a letter and follow Penetangasheen in that way. Appreciate that.
Counselor Patel?
Through you Deputy. So I know we, I think we have the auxiliary police that OPP has, maybe educating the small business in downtown core, how to prevent any, I guess, crime against them. I guess better education is the word I'm looking for. Creating like a little mini task force, maybe going business by business or an email list create and just send out mass email to all the businesses. Because prevention is the key. I mean, being in the accommodation business that I'm in, we always look for preventions because, you know, once a client goes in the room, we don't know what's going to happen. So we always look ways to prevent any crime from happening. So not everybody has the same experience as we do dealing with different types of people. So maybe creating a prevention task force so businesses can be better educated through low level lighting, which can prevent crime as well. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Patel for the the comment. We do use our auxiliaries in a program called Project Safeguard. They do go out. It is about protecting property. We can have that delivered of interest. I am meeting with the BIA specifically in Midland in the next two weeks to talk about some of the safeguarding of businesses, some of the issues that business owners face and how we can provide better services. Albeit understanding some of its private property, but I am aware that there's trespassing that happens in the back of the properties with people with drug use and refusing to move along, right? So I think that working with the businesses, getting that information out, setting up those presentations through auxiliary program is definitely something that I would be interested in doing and seeing through. Thank you.
Follow up?
Thank you. I think we're in the right direction.
Thank you, Counselor.
Does anybody else have any questions? Counselor Meredith?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost, through you to Mr. Pittman or Inspector Pittman. I'm on the BIA. BI rap for the town. So I'll see you in two weeks and I'm sure we'll have a great discussion again with the BIA. And we've had many conversations, the BIA received many phone calls in the last couple of weeks and I'm sure you've heard of the issues with counsel has received letters. But the frustrating part about you know, situations that occur that are occurring in our community. It seems like, you know, we talk about it, but nothing's happening. It's getting worse and worse and worse. And it's nothing frustrating from you know, being in this seat as same thing in your position to to constantly, you know, it seems like our hands are tied and we can't do nothing. Because there are there aren't any solutions. We can write letters, but I'm sure you know, the letters where they're going, they already know the situation. Right? So there's a there's a letter need to put a little bit of fire under under them to to, you know, to react. It shouldn't work that way. It is happening everywhere, but in our downtown, you know, we have public urination. We have open alcohol, open drug use. Everybody sees it. But yet, nothing is being done. I personally was behind an OPP cruiser and there's a gentleman on the sidewalk with an open can of beer. Went right by. Now, the frustration could be because, you know what? I'm going to go over there, dump his beer and he's going to come in and, you know, get another one or beg for more change and get more drug or alcohol. And it's no fault to the OPP officers. But when the public like, I'm a not only a taxpaying citizen, safety is important to our community, to our downtown, you know, business owners, the downtown people who frequent downtown are locals and are tourists, right? So they're being approached at banks, bank machines. It came to a point where I talked to the manager of Scotia Bank and they are now hiring their own security, right? Which, you know, banks, banks are there for profit. And if this escalates where they're, you know, the last thing we need is our financial institutions leaving our downtown core. So there's some serious issues downtown and in the community. I'm specifically talking about downtown. And what can we do? You know, further on to your, the issues that are happening in the back of of commercial spaces. You know, there was an incident, you know, in a washroom where there was someone shooting up drugs in the washroom. And if that was my my business, I don't think I would have been as kind as this person was, right? And had I acted in a way that I felt was necessary because of the frustration, I might go to jail. But yet, but yet we have, you know, the open drug use, the alcohol and and it's hurting our downtown. It's hurting our community. So when when we transitioned to OPP from our Midland Police Service, our level of service to our community shouldn't go down. You know, I don't think that was at that time, counselors that were on, you know, sitting in this position. I'm pretty sure they didn't vote for that. But yet, the amount of police presence in our community seems less than it was before. The the amount of police that are informed about what's going on, who's coming into our town. You know, the strangers like before Midland Police Service kind of knew who was local and who was not. So I don't get that feeling from from the community that that's the case anymore. We have, you know, the downtown core businesses know the locals. And they know when there's a new bunch just just came into town, right? And now it repeats all over again because now they have to figure out what this person's all about and not saying they're all here to cause disturbances. But those that that do are not are not being, you know, penalized. So they just keep on doing it again and again. So the frustration is there and I'm sure you know. And sitting in this seat, I'm at a loss right now. I, you know, I'm, you know, with the counselor ball here, here, it's just, it's frustrating and it's going to get to a point where, you know, things are going to get you know, we don't want it to escalate. We just want to get this under control. So and we're working on things as council here, but we could only do so much.
Thank you very much for the comment, Counselor Meredith. Counselor Reese, you had?
Counselor Reese?
Thank you, through your deputy, Mayor Prost. What, what do you need from us to ask the OPP to be provided with more police officers to help you guys? Because the truth is you guys are taking a beating when you're really just trying to do your job. You're exhausted. The catch and release system is completely failing, our justice system. And the rotating justice system, you're right on point. You do your job. They're out in hours. They don't care. With the resources that we have with the mental health center and the super jail and other other unique situations, what would you need from us and say the county of Simcoe to press for maybe some more help on the streets with you? Some more police officers? Do you think that might help your exhausted police officers? And I just, you know, I'll end on this. I just think you guys deserve to be praised. I know that you're doing the best that you can and it's exhausting. I can only imagine what you guys come home to every single night frustrated with exhaustion. So what my question is, what can we as a council working together do to help you?
Thank you very much for the question, Counselor Reese, and actually just moved from roadways, waterways and trails, which is the next part of the of the detachment action plan to community well being. And I think really we're hitting at the root cause of some of the problems. So there is some thinking out there that if we put another hundred officers, so if I could get another hundred officers and I could put them out, well, that actually solved the problems that are occurring in community. You're right, Counselor Meredith, it won't. I think that what we're looking at is that there are root causes to why these things happen. So specifically in the North Simcoe Community Safety and Well Being Plan, which is quite large, we have three themes for this area specifically that we're focusing on. We have higher rates of mental health and addiction. We have struggles with housing for people to be able to afford housing because we have lower rates of education, therefore lower rates of unemployment and lower rates of wage. So it creates a bit of an issue for our area locally. This is something that's listed in the 2021 to 2025 Community Safety and Well Being Plan for this area. So when I look at our response on will more police fix a problem? I don't think so. I think what is being missed and total transparency with the council here, and I'm willing to talk about this and say this to anybody and something that I think that council can help me with is I see that we have partner agencies. The OPP is one of them. We have a role in community safety. Albeit, we don't have really any role in solving housing or education or mental health. We respond to the calls. But we do have partners that do this, that specialize in this. What I think we need to do and what I would be interested in is when we took a look and this community safety and well being plan will be looked at again, when we took a lot of look at this earlier that I guess, earlier this year, I asked a question. I said, who is actually focusing on education? So which partner is out in community, working with people on higher levels of education? Who is doing that? Who is actively out there, boots on the ground, interacting with people that is working on mental health and addictions? And who out there is trying to have sustainable, affordable housing? And I know Simcoe is building some, I'm aware of that. But who is actively promoting this? So we have people doing things, but in silos. What I find is that there's not a lot of coordination, at least I haven't seen it since I've been here. So something that I am very interested in as a partner at the table, know we don't leave these things, but I would be happy to be a voice to talk about. but I would be happy to be a voice to talk about some of the mental health, to talk about some of the drug issues, to bring the statistics, to say, this is how much we're responding. So how can we get to the root causes and do better as service providers? Honestly, I think that's what we need. I think that's that's what's missing. Our detachment staffing is at an all time high right now. Since I've been here, we have had more staff in the detachment, we're actually overstaffed right now. So we have officers, they do get tired in the summer because you have competing vacation requests, time off, and then increased calls for service, our calls increase significantly. So there is an exhaustion factor that comes in. Which is why I say that the increased foot patrols through overtime is temporary because I can't guarantee we're going to fill all the shifts because officers need a time off as well. But I'm willing to step up as a partner to say, hey, we're willing to step up, we're willing to put more people out, we're willing to do this, but we need the assistance of the other partners. A plan that's only a plan that's written on paper, that's not operational, meaning people actually aren't doing it, is no good. It's worth the paper that it's written on. So I think to answer both councillor Emeritus's question and your question councillor East, is we need engagement from the community partners. I think we need to sit down and figure out who is doing what in a coordinated fashion for the betterment of community is exactly what I think we need.
Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Inspector Pittman. I'm very excited to hear that you want to step up as a partner. I don't know if you were aware of, but last October, Midland presented a symposium that was called Hope Housing and Health. I think it was OPP presence there, I don't quote me on that. But and there is some material coming out soon, we'll make sure you get a copy. And what that symposium was was all trying to pull together all the agencies so that we can start working together. And we're hosting another one this October. And seeing as you want to step up as a partner, we'll be contacting you on how to assist us with that symposium. Because I think that that's the right track. We have to find out which agency is doing what, where the duplicates are, where are we lacking? How can we work together in educating ourselves, our residents? And move on, provide some relief.
Absolutely. Thank you. McDonald, thank you. I was at the one in the past October, we were present. And it was very eye opening. And I left there with the sense that there are people out there doing things, but we're not coordinated. As coordinated as we should be, I shouldn't say that. There are groups, we have situation tables where we share information, there are things that are happening. I think we can be better. That's what I think. I think we can do it better. That's just the reality. I think we need a coordinated calculated plan that's evidence based, that looks at where the real problems are and looks at how to apply the finite resources that every agency will have. But I know that they have people doing things. I went to Georgia Bay Native Women's Association, and it was for a feather that we had for detachment that one of our officers was able to get for people that didn't want to swear firm, but they wanted to hold a feather. And so we now have that available. So I went to to accept the feather with the officer on behalf of the detachment. And as I was walking in, I met a young man walking out and he introduced himself and I said, oh, what do you, what do you do? And he said, actually, I'm a youth worker and I go out and I interact with Indigenous youth in our streets. I'm like, so you do that? So we have somebody that's doing that, but with who else? Where's the coordination? And it occurred to me that we can do better. And I think that that will lead, that that leans into Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. It leads into my portion of community well-being that I really won't get into depth on because it's really about the coordination of services for the partners. And I I am very committed councillor McDonald, because I think really it's the only thing that will make a difference. The Band-Aid approach of just arresting people, grabbing liquor, I've been on foot patrols, actually went down and seen councillor East down at down at his store the one day. And and on the way down, I probably dumped out about two or two or three beers. I didn't issue tickets because the people are homeless, they're of no fixed address. And what's its liquor ticket going to do to somebody who's never going to pay it? So look at it this way. What if, so what if we could actually help people that are homeless, that have addictions problems, and we're trying to get them back on the feet? And then they go and they finally get back, they get a job, they're going to go get their car and they have $20,000 in unpaid fines. So how do we get over that hurdle? So I'm not saying that not doing anything is the answer, but I'm also saying that charging people that are never going to pay the tickets, especially for liquor, is not going to make an impact. I think drugs, yes, we have to take the drugs, we have to enforce, we have to do things, but it's not going to fix the addiction. It's not getting to the root causes of that problem. So it's going to continue to exist. I think that the coordination is the only way forward.
Sorry, councillor Ball.
Thank you. I just wanted to say in terms of collaboration, there is a monthly meeting that I'm sure they would love for you to be a part of. It's Georgian Bay Women's Association, WNDAT, Guest House Shelter, Salvation Army, all of the agencies that you're speaking about that do street outreach. They meet monthly to make sure that they can collaborate as much as possible. And I think you probably would be a missing piece to that. And I would be happy to connect you with the people that are running that so that you can get involved with that. And there can be like some sort of collaboration between you two because that's obviously something that is necessary. There's no point in you doing outreach when someone else is doing outreach and vice versa. Or they're trying to do your job, you're trying to do theirs. Absolutely, I agree. Collaboration is what this council is all about. And I think that I, they would love to open their arms and invite you to that table. So I will connect you with them.
Excellent, councillor Ball, I do appreciate that and I would welcome that. I think it's essential, it's needed. And I know we don't know each other that well. However, I like to look at plans but make them operational. I like to have action to get out on the streets and to make a difference. I don't, I don't like to have meetings just to have other meetings. I like to have meetings to make a difference. So I'd be happy to be a part of that. Like I said earlier, we are looking at increasing our emsir complement. So we will have, they have a mental health focus, but we could also use them for community engagement. And I think it's an important piece of something that I could bring to the table and bring in the information that they require. So thank you for that, I'd be happy.
Councillor Ball.
Thank you. I just wanted to find out if you need some some information. I was a Crown for 16 years and I'm retired now, so.
Congratulations.
So, yes. It was a long, long 16 years, I'll tell you. But in any case, if you do, you know, want to speak to me or I would like to speak to you. So just let me know.
Thank you very much, councillor Ball. I would, I would welcome that conversation. Like I said, it's, and it's funny because you don't point, like I don't point the finger at the Crowns for withdrawing the charges. I know that there's case law that if people don't get to trial in time, they're going to drop the charges anyway, right? Because it's, and it's an unreasonable delay, so therefore it becomes a charter violation. I understand that very well. They are facing systemic issues, but I think there has to be a fix. I'd be interested in that conversation is what can we do to advance that? Because what we're doing now isn't working. So.
I I agree with all of what you said there. So hopefully we can meet and, you know, chat about that.
Absolutely, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, before I go back to councillor McDonald, I want to turn. I just wanted to tell, say thank you. Every single time I speak to you or hear you speak, you you make me feel like there's hope. And it's inspiring for the first time since, I mean, I don't know how long it with the county coming to the table and providing a help in our town and with our police being ready to just jump in and be part of it. It just makes me feel happy because we are a community and I want to keep it that way. And we're very, very fortunate to have you. Absolutely very fortunate to have you because not everybody's going to do what you do. They don't think about getting to the root and and helping with the problem. I don't like Band-Aids. I mean, sometimes they're necessary, but they need to be very brief. And getting to the root, it takes much longer, it takes more effort, it takes more work, but it's worth it. And I'm so glad that you think that way and I appreciate what you do.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, I really appreciate that. Of interest in on the topic of community well-being, we we provide an office space actually in this building here where our police, where our police station is to a member of our community safety services or formerly community safety services, they just changed her name. But she is formerly, she's a clinician, she specializes in hospital patient transfer times, which is of interest to us so that we could hand people off and then get back to the road to do more calls for service. So she is actually working on some of those protocols which is in the plan. But there's a grant that I became aware of through WNDAT on funding for more mental health workers and things like that. So where I'm going with this is when we sit down as community partners, I am aware that there are grants to help communities. There are grants to fund these things. There might be grants to hire a position. I know that, for example, the Dryden OPP have have a program called Pathways. Now, theirs is rather unique, they didn't have access to a lot of services. We do have services down here. They didn't have access to as many. So they actually hired a person that was a former addict, fully recovered and wanted to get out and work. They hired that person. They now are technically employed under a grant, but through the OPP to go out and interact with people struggling for addictions. And they have multiple, multiple success stories. So those are the kind of things that I'm interested in and I'm willing to step up and start to champion. And again, like I said, the the extra officer is the overtime, it's temporary, it's a cost. However, I know that there are grants to do long term things, not these Band-Aid solutions. So I have the the researcher that that's with us right now, she's actually looking at European models. We're not just sticking to candidates, like what else are they doing in other countries? What else are they doing in Europe? They tend to be quite progressive. So we're looking for successful models. And she's going to report back to me because I want to bring that forward to the table of partners to say, can we do this? Sometimes you'll be met with a no, but I don't like no's because there's always a way to either go around obstacles, under them, over them. Obstacles are just obstacles. I think if we all are looking towards the end goal of real community safety and well-being, that we can work around things and develop new things. And that's really what I'm interested in. So we have that coming as well. But thank you.
McDonald, councillor McDonald.
I'm going to ask you two questions. What is your reaction to safe injection sites? Are they worthwhile? And then did I hear you say that there is going to be increased presence in the downtown Midland for a bit?
Yeah, so what I'm thinking about doing on the increased presence piece is putting out community focused patrols as overtime through the summer period. But what I want to do is do a little bit of consultation, part of that is with the BIA. Because I want to target the resources, being aware that officers will become increasingly tired. And there's a lot of mental strain on them. I need to put the shifts where they're needed to keep them at a minimum. Also, there is a cost, right? So I don't want, and I'm a taxpayer as well, so I don't want increased costs unnecessarily. I want if we're going to do something for it to make a difference, albeit this is a temporary solution to increase visibility, which I think will have an impact in fairness. So that is something I am going to bring forward and implement, but I just want council to know that you will see more officers. But if there is an increase in in the cost of police services, that's also why. We do have a lot of officers, but we also have a large area that we do cover. So in fairness, that's why I'm going the direction of the overtime to address this right now. And I think that there is the opportunity to also work with the One Community, or One Community Solutions to probably offset the need for us to be there as much, depending on what they bring and do. We just, I just don't know what that model is, but I'm interested in working with them to ensure the safety. Safe injection sites. This is a Todd Pittman opinion, not an OPP opinion. It is largely being discussed with police services across Canada. I can only tell you what I've heard. I know in British Columbia, I was actually talking to the Vancouver City Police at a conference that I was at about the idea of the safe injection sites. Initially, it sounded like a good idea because the it provided a place for people to go, it wasn't in the streets so much, it was out of the public eye, it was supervised. We could keep things clean, the needle deposits, everything. The reality is, is it grew legs and it's now morphed to where they actually just changed the legislation again to where they can inject within a certain distance of schools because there were addicts and people hooked on drugs injecting on school property. They were sitting at the hospitals, just injecting at the hospitals because of the overdose, they were hoping. So it actually got a lot bigger than they initially intended and they've lost control of it. So I understand the concept, going back to what is a ticket going to do? It's not going to curtail the behavior, you have to treat the behavior. The punishment is not a deterring factor for an addict because they're hooked. They they have to get help to get off of that. So do I think providing the access for the site is the answer? I'm not so sure. Right? When we look at, you know, homelessness in town, we have our homeless shelter downtown, right? The intended consequence is to provide a place for people to go. The reality is, is that we have, we're a part of the Simcoe County Shelter System to to councillor Emeritus's comment is we actually do know who's up here. We have a lot of people from Toronto that are not a part of this community, that are wanted on warrants, that are violent people that we've actually arrested and asked to ship back because of their warrants. So we do have an increase of people that are not from this community, in this community because of the shelter system. It's an unintended consequence, but it's the reality is, is it's here and we're dealing with it now. And that's, and that's the same thing with safe injection sites is that I think that we'll lose control of it and it will just grow legs.
Councillor East.
I know that this is the third round and this is the last one. So it's very much true, once you open Pandora's box, you can't shut it. So and the temporary Band-Aid fix, believe it or not, is during the summer months. I can speak to a single mother that just tried to walk into her apartment building with her children with two people very, very messed up, scaring the hell out of her children and wouldn't let her pass. That's broad daylight. And it's very important. So I'm very grateful that you're going to put that effort down there. I'm all for a balanced conversation about the root and 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 being a part of the solution instead of being a part of the problem. But at the same time, there has to be that balanced conversation of community safety and and keeping our community safe. So I am very appreciative that you're going to put some effort downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor East.
Councillor Emeritus.
Thank you. I just wanted to have a word before Mayor Gordon started speaking. And and I'm just, I'm just, it's just a big thank you to you and your commitment to this community. And I'm confident that with you and our community partners and this council, we can, we can hopefully make a difference. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Emeritus.
Councillor Ball.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak on the grants and the funding that you were talking about and being able to provide leadership in programs that might not exist otherwise. The library does have the ability to have funding from Simcoe County for a social worker. They have not been able to secure that because they don't have the capacity or ability to oversee a social worker or even develop a program. So maybe that's something, again, with the collaboration that the OPP is able to take on, to be able to have a social worker in, around the library especially, is extremely important and it would be very valuable. So to be able to make that happen, if the OPP has that capacity, that would be amazing. So I'm glad to hear that you have the ability to foster programs like that. So hopefully something will come of that. And before I don't get a chance, I just wanted to speak briefly on the youth engagement officer. She's phenomenal. So I just wanted to say that before we go any further and it ends. I wanted to just say that she's been involved in a lot of community initiatives and projects that I've been able to witness. And she's doing very well by the OPP. So I just want to give her some very amazing props for her.
Thank you, councillor. I sing her praises often. Thank you.
Councillor Patel.
Thank you, deputy. So just with what you said about safe injection, I think I I feel the same way. The words free, safe and easy can be misled. So I think I'm not for the safe. I'm not for the safe injection. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, one more for me before I give the floor to Mayor Gordon. Um, I just want to tell you that um I appreciate everything that the OPP is doing. I appreciate you. And I feel honored that we have you here tonight and willing to work with other partners, willing to talk to us and answer our questions. Um, it's, it's, it's just fantastic. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I uh, I look forward to the next time I come. Hopefully that there is a difference being made and a noticeable impact, especially in our downtown core. It does draw a lot of our resources as police. We do get a lot of calls down there. So it's a trade-off to me. So if I dedicate resources to it permanently, does it reduce the overall call volume that we're getting because we're moving in the direction that we should be? I think it will. So that's why I'm so keen to, to give some resources to explore what we can do, to do things better, to work with partners. I think it will have a positive impact and ultimately reduce the calls for service and do other things like reduce crime, the Crime Security Index and all the important things uh that, that I keep an eye on as well. So, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Gordon.
There isn't much left to say. Honestly, you guys nailed it. Um, when, when I, Inspector Pittman and I had an opportunity to talk, we were talking about something else and it very quickly, as you can imagine with me, morphed. And uh, we ended up talking about a different, bunch of different issues. I get the same emails and calls that all of you get. And the ones that I think you don't get, I flip you so you know what's going on. We were talking about some issues around the local business across from the shelter that was experiencing, you know, basically a plague of issues. And at any rate, so I just wanted to thank you for coming and speaking to council tonight. Um, we kind of, you know, shoehorn you into the agenda. I just thought it was, this was way too important for just you and I to have a coffee chat about. This needed to be, you know, council, the public, everyone needed a chance to be able to talk to you about the initiatives that you've been dreaming up. So I appreciate the opportunity to brainstorm with you, um, how responsive you remain and these initiatives. And the rea- very real reality that, you know, I'm prepared to defend an increased cost in policing uh for those extra uh boots in the ground as you can spare them. Because I know that we still can't, uh, even if we wanted to, we couldn't, you know, subscribe to more policing in our community because of the moratorium on, on uh police officers. You know, we could subscribe for more specials and things like that, but not for police officers. So I appreciate the effort you're doing, the fact that you're fully staffed right now. That's a, a bonus, but you know, Midland isn't, it is the center of our universe, but I recognize in your world, we're zone five. And, and honestly, no more deserving of your resources, your precious resources than zones one through four. Uh, but I do appreciate that we do make the most calls for service, therefore draw the most resources out of the community. And then if you're going to put more people in our downtown, which I s- I fully endorse and thank you for. Um, I, we, as a council, need to be cognizant that that's a draw on policing in our neighbors. And they're going to be experiencing as a result, longer response times to less serious calls. And, you know, maybe the feeling of less policing because Midland's like going to be a black hole sucking all of those resources in. So that's something I'll talk to uh my neighboring mayors with at our next um all mayors meeting. And apologize in advance. Some of them watch these shows, so they'll, so they'll see this and they'll probably be caught talking to me in the next couple of days and you. Uh, but anyway, I don't have a whole lot to add. Council has uh picked off all the salient points and you've addressed the ones that um I was, we talked about that I was hoping somebody would draw out of you. You, you did. So I'm just wondering how our, our sort of collaborative drug house uh approach that we dreamed up at that drug house talk is working out or is it at all? That's the collaboration between police, fire, bylaw, and taking this tag team approach uh when you attend on a warrant or, you know, fire gets a tip that it's uh like a flop house, you know? And, you know, are it, is our communication channel working and are you able to take this? And it's neat that we got Kail in the office tonight or in council tonight. Is it, is it? And is it being effective? You know, because again, to your point, we had this meeting, we made some promises to the community. They don't necessarily feel it all the time. They see your presence at drug houses doing busts and then they see the same, you know, numpties back out eight hours later doing exactly the same thing. And then we get the emails. So I'm just wondering, has that, has there been any effect? Um, has that been effective or is it? Yeah, any challenges to that? Because that is something that is within our limited ability to manage.
Yeah. So from what I understand and Kail's here as well and could probably speak to it directly is that there has been outreach and connection on um some of those drug houses. So what we're referring to is we go in, we execute a drug warrant. Um, it's hard to evict people based on a charge because we get arrested and then they go back home, right? It's, we have no ability to remove them from their home. It um, and even for a landlord to remove somebody to go through the tribunal takes some time, as we've seen actually in Midland, and there have been houses where people have been evicted and boarded up and are being renovated. So that's a good thing to uh, to be able to move forward. But if the house uh doesn't have working smoke alarms, isn't safe, i- is uh, it's clear, we could actually request uh that fire come in, property standards come in and do an inspection. And then through that inspection, if it's not safe, um, people can be ordered out of that house because it's not in a safe condition. Many of these houses are not safe. They're not maintained. Uh, there's garbage piled up uh extremely high. Uh, it, they just, a lot of them live in squalor. You would not believe it unless you've seen it. Um, so look, that's the type of partnership that we're also working on with our local fire services to bring them in to say, I'm not sure the, the smoke alarms don't look to be working. We're not the experts. Can, can you take a look and let us know what you think? So we do have that in place. It is active. Um, I'm not going to say anything uh about drug warrants or enforcement other than uh our drug unit is back to capacity and is actively working on multiple cases in our entire detachment area of which includes Midland. So I assume that um now because we have more drug officers, there will be increased collaboration with our fire partners as well as we see these issues. So thank you for that, uh, your worship. That is something that we are actively pursuing as well.
Great. Just to follow up to uh private security downtown, that's another thing that gets brought up, like, you know, during coffee chats and Facebook uh comments and stuff. What role, if any, could uh the town contract private security to enhance safety downtown? Like what, what role, if any, do you see private security playing if we wanted to fund that? Uh, because we can't, you know, buy more police officers.
So I think in the private areas of business, uh depending on those lots, I'm not sure if those are privately or publicly owned. Um, like in the back of the business and things like that, we could have roving private security patrols as well. So if you go to, uh, we're a small town, but we are having big city problems, right? We do have increased thefts. Uh, we do have increased drug use. Uh, a- and, and I think the reality is, is that we have increased um mischief going through vehicles. So I think the visibility, the presence would be welcome. They can enforce on private property with the permission of the property owner or the Trespasser Property Act. So that's one of the things um that we're actually doing with the banks. Is uh, I have assigned an officer uh as a I'm gonna s- last week, last week I sent the email to have an officer assigned. So I think they were assigned this week to go around to the banks and talk to them about having private security clear people out of the veses of Uels. One of the other pieces is, it's not just on private security, but it's also us as the OPP to give us advanced permission that if there are people sleeping in there trespassing and people don't feel safe going in, that we have the authority on their property to remove people because otherwise it's private property. Uh, the bank's on it. So we are going to ra- around to reestablish those connections. But I think that um security patrols, one like, one, like the one uh, one community uh solutions, I think that's the name. Um, would be welcome and I'd be happy to work in partnership with them on clarifying lanes of responsibilities, uh lanes of responsibility and roles. So, because if they're doing one thing, then there's no, no reason, and, and if it's effective, to have the police doing the same thing. What can we do? Then do we focus on the drug use? Do we focus on getting those people moved along? Do we focus on connecting them with the right partners once we engage with the partners? That's really what I'm interested in is coordinating resources and looking at who's doing what to ensure there's overlap, but not duplicity. So I think private security would definitely have a role in that, your worship.
Thanks again for coming tonight. Really appreciate it. Um, you know, because it's a mixed bag of you don't know what's coming at you. Uh, and so I appreciate your candid uh and openness to just appear on our agenda item and field the questions from council and that, you know, or questions from the community. So thanks a lot and keep doing what you do and uh we'll keep the communications channels wide open to council.
Thank you very much, your worship. I uh, I just have a closing comment. I don't want to open a bag of worms because I know we're out of time. However, the other part of our detachment action plan is on a big one. It's on roads, trails. So it's about highway safety. It's about aggressive driving speed and complaint stop signs. Uh, number one complaint in the organization, probably the number one complaint in town as well. I just want you to know uh that I do have an approach where I'm taking, we have part-time members that work for us and then we have rotational members that go and work in the north and come back to our detachment for a period of three weeks on a seven-week rotation. Um, that those officers are being assigned to traffic enforcement specifically. Calls for service increase in the summer. Officers are responding to calls. We have issues downtown. Officers go to those. They can't write tickets while they're doing those. So I'm trying to develop a, a solution in community to still have a response, to still have people working on that. So I just want you to know that that is something of interest to me. I know there are conversations. I spoke with Penetang around the automated speed enforcement, the AMS program. Um, I, I think it, it, it will have a positive impact. It will slow vehicles down. Uh, I think there are weaknesses to it in that uh the driver doesn't get punished, the registered owner of the car does. However, uh, people are cognizant of, of um of, of the speed reductions of the, of the existence of the camera. It will slow people down. That's reality. Cars will slow down. And uh, those that don't will get tickets. Uh, it doesn't remove the work of the police. So we are still needed for traffic enforcement. We're still needed to interact and will. But I think in working together and developing community solutions, um roadway modifications, things, um, I think they all contribute to road safety. So I just want you to know that I do have an approach for that as well and, and have implemented it. So um, I do see our numbers going up, uh, which is both good and bad. It's good because there's increased enforcement, bad because people are slowing down. But I just wanted to share that in closing. Thank you so much for all of your questions, your support, and I look forward to uh connecting with several of you afterwards and continuing to work together. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, on to number 12. Reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration includes presentations and cons- and consultants regarding report under consideration. 12.1 CSR 2024 dash 44 NSR, or sorry, NSSRC user fees. Um, can I ask for a mover and a seconder? Counselor Ball and Counselor East. That staff report CSR dash 2024 dash 44 NSSRC user fees dated May 22nd, 2024 be received and one, the staff be directed to investigate naming rights for the North Simcoe Sports and Recreation Centre as an option for other source revenue and that a non-resident, non-North Simcoe excluding Springwater fee of 5% be added to all rentals within the NSSRC and that a letter addressed to Tayan Tiny Township Councils be sent requesting contribution to the NSSRC to avoid the need to implement, to implement non-resident fees for these communities. That the composite fees and charges by law be amended to include fee increases effective September 1st, 2024 of 10% increase for summer floor rentals, 20% increase for the gymnasium, 5% increase all other rentals and that as part of the 2025 budget process, a multi-year fee by law for the NSSRC be brought forward for council's consideration to allow for predict- predictable rate increases for user groups. So I have my mover and a seconder and I can open the floor for discussion. Counselor Ball.
Thank you. I would uh like to ask that we deal with each of these separately and not as a full motion. I think a lot of the time with these large motions, we agree with one or two of the things and the whole thing ends up passing. And I think that there is a very distinct items that should be dealt with separately.
So do we have a mo- motion to split this motion?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'll have to prepare one. One moment.
Okay, so I have uh Counselor Ball as a mover and Counselor Patel as a seconder. That council suspend the rules of procedure to allow for the recommendations as set out in item 12.2 CSR dash 204 dash 44 NSSRC user fees to be considered separately. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, that staff report CSR, CSR dash 2024 dash 44 NSSRC user fees dated May 22nd, 2024 be received and that, so we're going to do the first one, that staff be directed to investigate naming rights for the North Simcoe Sports and Recreation Centre as an option for other source of revenue. So we'll deal with that one first. Will the floor is open for comments? That one's okay?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We have the same, you can have the same mover and seconder for all of the recommendations. So the original one was moved by Counselor Ball and seconded by Counselor East. But Deputy Mayor can repeat that for each one.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. I'd like to uh just as we get into all of these, it'll be recurring themes. So these recommendations came out of the working group. And uh, the, of one of the top ones that we're dealing with right now is the naming rights. So the naming rights is something I think we'd mused about as an option. We've seen it work well in Berry and other centers uh, whi- which can bring in, you know, not only operational funds, but also capital monies. And it would mean the, you know, the removal of North Simcoe Sports and Rec Center, which is near and dear to a lot of people's hearts, but doesn't really align with the reality of the way it's funded. So this is, this was actually the number one recommendation of, as I recall, because the Because the, all of the teams and the groups that were at our, our meeting, you know, with the exception being Tiny and Tay, of course. Felt that this could be their panacea, this was the, this was the way to avoid non-resident fees entirely by, we'd raise a boatload of money, changing the name on the building. But, you know, as the discussion, you know, continued, I think they understood that that's like a one-time injection of cash and the likelihood of us getting, you know, enough money out of just the naming thing to negate non-resident fees and stop Midland residents and ratepayers from having to carry the water of all of our neighbors. Uh, it just wasn't really the solution, but it was part of it. So it still stayed, as I recall, number one, um, you know, as we worked through the, the working group that night. That this is low-hanging fruit, it's something we ought to consider very seriously. And staff took away all those recommendations and that, that they made up this report here, so. This is a, a step in the right direction and unfortunately, because it's complex, it's not gonna happen overnight. Um, there are organizations we can engage that help us market and sell this and get bidders and, you know. I'd certainly hope that it ended up being, you know, the local business with deep pockets that got the naming rights and not, you know, Kleenex or something. Uh, but at the end of the day, whoever's gonna throw the most money at us to help, uh, offset our capital and operational costs, you know, is gonna end up with that, uh, you know, the winning bid, I'm sure. So, I think by us passing this tonight, which I hope we do, uh, it will send a clear signal to our local businesses that, uh, start paying attention because sometime in the next six to eight months, uh, we'll be talking about it again and there'll be a, a very public um, opportunity for businesses to participate and get their name on that, uh, centre. And of course, it would be on every ticket and every bulletin that's printed and all the goodwill that goes with it, all the radio mentions, all the things that go along with where we've in the past been hearing North Simcoe Sports and Rec Centre or NSSRC, it will become the your name here, uh, centre. So I, I, I think no matter what we choose for options, this is the option that definitely needs to pass, uh, because it's forward-thinking, it's been done elsewhere, it's relatively painless and easy for us to do. And the end result will be, uh, you know, much-needed relief on the ratepayers. And goodwill and promotion of what I hope to be a local North Simcoe business. Or consortium, or however it ends up working. So those are my thoughts on them, clearly I'm fully in support of it and, uh, it was what came out of the, out of the working group, which was a really good working group night.
Councillor Ball?
Thank you, uh, this is why I wanted this separated, because I think that this is something we should be investigating before we are raising user fees this soon, I think this allows for us to at least give these organizations and non-users or non-resident fees, uh, a chance to catch up to that, not just throw it at them instantly, there's been a lot of backlash. I've been very vocal about the fact that it has a ripple effect on our residents from other organizations and other communities raising, uh, Midland to being able to have non-resident fees for them. So this is not something that I want, I'm not, obviously it has to be funded from somewhere, I'd like to see it funded from something like this. Uh, before we're resorting to raising fees for non-residents, because I think it has a ripple effect that is not positive for our residents.
Councillor Meredith?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. For the, um, the naming rights, um, you had mentioned Mayor Gordon that it's, it's, it's a one-shot deal, like, i- impact of, is this, I, I, and I know the meat and potatoes aren't, aren't sorted out yet, but, uh, when, when it comes to naming rights, I, I kind of figure it's like a, it's a yearly renewal or like, or is it a one-shot? Like, I don't know how Barry does it and everyone else, is it a one-shot fee and that's it for a five-year term, or is it like every year, there's an influx of, let's say, you know, $25,000? Or is it just a $25,000, just throwing a name of, uh, an amount up there? So, um, so is that what you're, you're just talking a one-shot hit, uh, like for, let's say for a five-year term, or? Or is, I know it's still early, but, uh, but I do like the notion of putting it out there and, and seeing if we can generate some, uh, some, uh, income through, uh, through naming rates, for sure.
I just think in response to that, it's, it's all negotiable. So other communities will offer like a five-year or 10-year deal, first right of refusal kind of thing to renew it. Um, the expense of renaming and rebranding the facility is not something someone would go to for a one-year deal, that would be probably five or 10 years. And then typically there's first right of refusal to, to keep it going, we've seen this, uh, all over the place. But the companies that will help sell this for us, um, you know, that's what they do, is the same way we use them for butter tart, I think, to sell who sponsors the shuttle and, you know, those kind of things, this would just be a larger-scale investment. But same kind of thing. Council would get a report, I'm assuming, from council with here's, or from staff, here are the options and here's the kind of money that we think we can raise, but we don't know until we go out in the wild and rattle the cage and see um, who's the highest bidder. But we could anticipate, you know, some significant, like, material money being raised to, for the naming rights and it would be for some period of time. And whether it would come as a all-up-front or a yearly, uh, it'd probably be yearly, but, you know, however it's negotiated. We will definitely be able to, uh, forecast, our CFO will enjoy, you know, the predictability of this money coming in that will help offset, uh, the oper-, you know, the $1.8 million in growing deficit of running that place, so. So really, to be determined, but I think you're probably right on all accounts, it just depends on how the, the deal is structured and, and how the bidder, the bit, the highest bidder might say, hey, I wanna 15-year deal, but I'm gonna throw all this money at you, and I wanna pay yearly. So I think we need to be, have our minds open on this and, and, uh, we'll see. So, good question though, thank you. That's, and that's my, just my opinion, it'll be up to staff and the marketing company how it works out.
Any further questions or comments? So we're voting on just number one. Okay, you've heard the, um, do you want me to just read it again? Um, that staff be directed to investigate naming rights for the North Simcoe Sports and Recreation Centre as an option for other sources of, uh, source of, uh, of revenue, sorry. Um, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay, on to the second part. The staff report CSR dash 2024 dash 44 NSSRC user fees dated May 22nd, 2024 be received and that a non-resident, non-Simcoe, non-Simcoe excluding, uh, Springwater fee of 5% be added to all rentals within the NSSRC. And that was moved by Councillor Ball and seconded by Councillor East. It's open for discussion. Mayor Gordon?
Thanks, just to throw in some context, I, I have the advantage of being at that committee or that, that working group, so I'm just gonna try and share some of the rationale that fed into this report. So, I'm gonna pick on Brampton for a second. Just because they, uh, have a team, or several teams, then in the fall, shoulder season before everything gets kicked off, they come up and practice here. Because we're the cheapest dice in Canada, it seems. And they get on a bus and the whole kit and kapoodle and up they come, I think it's Brampton, isn't it? Or the, ah, whatever. It's a GTA, it's one of them. So it's, we're a crazy good deal. And, you know, charging them an extra 5% isn't gonna be, like, dissuading them from coming up here, it's still a bargain. Uh, because we have some of the cheapest dice anywhere. So what this is trying to do, and, uh, Dave Brissette at, at the, at our Sports and Rec Centre, you know, he's the author of this and he spent a lot of time gleaning through the recommendations from the, uh, all the user groups, he knows them intimately because he interacts with them every day. And put this together with, with Dylan and the rest of the crew and this was what was believed to be fair. It's gonna only impact the odd, you know, this isn't gonna make material money for, for us, but it's something. It's only gonna impact those sort of odd ducks that come from afar to use our cheap resources, so we're just bringing it up a little bit. You know, like, we could have probably raised it 25% and they'd still come. But this is just something, and we didn't, we excluded Springwater on purpose because Springwater and the girls' hockey is a frequent user of our facility and we would have been, you know, adversely impairing them or killing, basically, their program if we priced it out. So, I've spoken to the mayor of Springwater, she's very happy and grateful that a little excluding Springwater is included in this, uh, and she's hoping that, uh, you know, we would leave it that way and whatever our deliberations are tonight. So this is one of those non-resident fees that truly is a non-resident fee outside of North Simcoe to, if, to raise money from people from clearly outside of North Simcoe, excluding Springwater, they wanna come and use our still relatively inexpensive asset. So that was the rationale for this one. Uh, this wasn't, I can't think it was like number three or something, but it was definitely, it was again, low-hanging fruit, why wouldn't we do this, right? Uh, because it doesn't even, was, oh, this is actually in the order, so it was number two. Uh, it, like, why wouldn't we do this? Because it's so simple, you know? Why are we leaving this money on the table? So that was the rationale and there was, you know, a unanimous support, uh, to, for this to be number two coming out of that working group. So there's just a little context feeding our debate.
Councillor Ball?
Thank you, I did, uh, see that it was a non-North Simcoe, but that context is always appreciated. I would have preferred to have it before, though I know what the rationale is coming out of this report. Uh, I still think that it has a ripple effect. I still think that it does give, uh, they're coming down here, they're spending money in our community, uh, they're coming back, they might book a vacation here, so I still don't agree with it, if it's a unanimous decision based off of the people using that building, then I would go along with it, I still don't think that it's the best option, though, I'm still not for it.
Mayor Gordon?
Yeah, so to your point, um, I think you'll see, there's a theme forming here. They, they're content and they understand our financial challenges, they want anybody other than them to have to pay here, so they, that's why the sell the naming rights was the first one. And let's nail anyone who doesn't even come from around here, but with a bit more of a surcharge to use our beautiful facility. And then as you slowly work down, you start to see the compromising that happened, because, you know, this wasn't all rainbows and unicorns at this committee, it ended up, uh, you know, started off really somber and it ended up actually being very conciliatory, it was really a well, well, um, attended, you know, good, good evening. But anyway, that's, so that was the rationale for number two, and you can sort of see that theme emerging.
Councillor Meredith?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Post, um, I just wanna make a comment before I ask the question, I just, uh, uh, reading through the report, I really thought it was, it was great, uh, to, yeah, first of all, it's a great report. Uh, second of all, just, just everybody working together, the user groups that were there, um, I wish I was there. Guess I could have went there, but, um, I didn't think I was invited, but anyways. Um, I just thought, uh, you know, everybody working together, especially the user groups, the management of the NSSRC, operations, our staff. Uh, and everybody came to a compromise here and it seemed like through the report that, um, you know, although there was some, you know, we were able to, to get away from, um, non, our non-resident fees through, in our community uh, or, or through our neighbors, so, um, I felt that, you know, when this was all, came out, there's, there's a divide now and, and, and I, I didn't, it didn't sit well with me, it didn't feel good. Um, but it seems like everybody came to, um, you know, a, a good solution here, so, um, I'm very grateful this, for this report and, and I'm glad to see um, that, um, you know, we're moving along with this and, and, uh, we can raise additional funds to support the, the Rec Centre. Um, my one question, um, from number two, the 5% uh, uh, fee, um, now, uh, it was a minimal like $2,000 to $5,000 in, in the report. So, is that, is that our gross? Um, uh, let's say it's a, to, let's say we collect $3,000. What's our net? Is there staff time, uh, involved, a lot of staff time to collect these fees? Um, or is it pretty much, uh, you know, our gross is our net, uh, revenue collected? Oh, thank you.
Uh, to Councillor Meredith, there be no change in staff time. It would be handled exactly the same as any other booking, it'd be in our Perfect Mind booking system and it would just get booked at that rate instead of the not, or the, the normal rate. So there would be no added staff time.
Great, thank you, and the reason for the question is if it, if we're, you know, if we're collecting five and, and staff time is four, then what's, what's the reason for, you know, to make a thousand bucks, so, but, uh, but thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, on to number three. That a letter addressed to Tay and Tiny Township Councils be sent requesting contribution to NSSRC to avoid the need to implement non-resident fees for these communities. Uh, before I, I pass this to the floor for questions or comments, I wanna say that I was very, very happy to see that, um, I think this is how we need to communicate with our neighbors and and, and talk to them. And I think this is a, is, this is a good thing, I support this part. Anybody else? Mayor Gordon?
This, so for context again, uh, you know, they were missed at the meeting, um, I understand the rationale, they shared it with me ahead of time, that, uh, that they didn't feel that they were user groups per se, they're municipalities as we are. Uh, so they didn't really feel that, that was the right fit for them to go in there and try and influence the outcome. Uh, clearly the user groups, made up of, you know, many of their own residents and ratepayers, felt differently that evening, but you know, it wasn't a, a mudslinging match or anything at Tiny and Tay. I then watch, as I do, my neighboring municipalities' council meetings when I'm bored and, uh, you know, I was listening to the, sort of the fallout, you know, uh, not, not only since we first passed this at our budget time, but since. And one question that came up, or one comment, you know, amongst others, uh, clearly they're not happy with this situation, because, you know, they haven't had to pay and now they do. Or they're faced with having to pay now. And I get it, I've heard their, their arguments and I, I talk with great esteem and respect with the mayors and deputy mayors of the neighboring, of both Tiny and Tay. And I understand their position. Uh, and I believe they understand ours. But so far, it's, you know, really kind of a standoff. So, one of the things that was brought up in camera, which council meeting it was, or which councillor, but they said, well, you know, Midland's never even asked us. We're he, learning about this in the newspaper and things like that. You know, or, you know, which, which is only partially true, because of course, I'd be having open dialogue with them at these mayor meetings with deputy mayor as well. But, to be fair, we never actually put pen to paper and said, hey guys, we have this 55K we're trying to make up. We can prove how many, uh, of your neighbor, your residents, you know, attribute to this 55K shortfall. And we believe that number is X, and we would very much appreciate it if you would consider, you know, writing a check every year that we can count on for X, you know, maybe going up at the rate of inflation. And then we don't even have to talk about this non-resident fee thing anymore, it's a non-issue. Right? Because we already reciprocate with Penetang, that's why they're not in the mix, you know, we use their stuff, they use our stuff. But, you know, to be fair, we never did ask officially. You know, they heard me on the radio and around the news, they got all these other places, but we never actually asked them. So, this was a bit of a no-brainer, and of course, I admitted to that wholeheartedly to the group that night, that you know what, we haven't actually asked them. What's it hurt? Let's not, you know, prejudge that they're just gonna send us back a, you know, thanks but no thanks, which we may get. Uh, or we may get some kind of offer. Or it may enter, you know, start a negotiation, which is all in the end we really want, because I don't think any of us are comfortable, you know, we don't wanna do user fees, this is just out of necessity for our ratepayers. So if there's another way, which a funding agreement would solve, and I've been adamant about that from the beginning, anyone who listened to me talk about it, funding agreements negate this entire conversation. Except I'd still push for the, the naming rights, because it's just a no-brainer. You know, so, I think it's well worth pending that letter, um, I'm happy to sign it, you know, with council's consent, asking them, and let's see what they come back with, you know, quite frankly, any contribution from them is better than what we're getting now. So, doesn't hurt task. And we'll do so with all due respect. And just to show you the way this works, because this hasn't, you know, put a divide between us, it really hasn't, about this issue it has. But, you know, for example, Tiny has asked for an extension of a year. And so has Tay and Penetang Machine to continue bringing their septage to us, we gave them a couple of months uh, to get them through the winter season. But while they're trying to figure out a longer-term solution, a letter's come to us, signed by all of them, on, you know, multi logo letterhead, asking for a one-year extension. Now, we haven't heard from staff about this yet, whether we can actually pull this off, will the ministry allow us, you know, like, is this gonna cost Midland taxpayers? We don't know that yet, so expect that, or maybe the- We don't know that yet. So expect that or maybe the, the next meeting. But we, you know, we work collaboratively together. So I, my takeaway for council and for people watching is this hasn't, you know, driven some divide between us. This issue clearly we're, you know, 180 degrees apart on, but in every other capacity, we're working well together. And I think this ask through this letter is, you know, just the adult thing to do. And let's see what comes from the ask and we can deal with that. So 100% support this and that's the background of where we're at with it.
Any further questions or comments? Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy, Deputy Mayor Post. So the last part of that, um, that motion, uh, to avoid the need to implement non-resident fees for these communities. So, um, we, we dress a letter to Tay and Tiny. They say you're getting a goose egg. And, um, then it comes back to council, uh, with the news and then, we vote on whether we're gonna put, uh, a non-resident fee on Tiny and Tay. Is this, that's how I'm reading this or? Staff answer that?
Through the, through the chair, uh, Counselor Meredith, that would be a decision you'd make then. That's not, there's no direction at this point. I think we'd like to see a pleasant response. And, uh, we don't want to threaten an outcome for an unpleasant response. So I think we'd see how that carries us. And, and of course, if any action after that would be up to council's discretion with recommendations. But we don't have that at the moment.
And just to follow up there, so we were, um, we were a shortfall, but you know, this is all over about $50,000, $55,000. And in our next motion, number four, we're, we're making up that close to $55,000. So I'm just wondering, I guess we'll address number three when it comes back to council. Cause that was our, our goal then, and if they say no, then, I would definitely not be in favor of, of those fees at the moment, uh, unless you can convince me otherwise. But, um, I'm, I'm great with the letter and see where, where it progresses. And then, uh, I guess time will tell and the direction will go. Thank you.
Through the chair, I would say to that, um, there's no chance that we're going to have too much money. Cause there's lots of needs. Okay. So there's no chance that there's going to be too much money. We won't know what to do with it. There's air conditioners. There's all kinds of things that need to be done that we put off. And if we ended up in good shape, we would find very good home for the funds. So let's hope for a good response from if you choose to send such a letter. And, uh, and, and I don't think there'll be any problem doing wise things with it.
And the wise thing would be possibly the tax-supported reserve or something like that. Right? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Meredith. Um, I just wanted to say again that I think this letter will be really good and I hope it, um, maybe it'll help, it'll help clear the air with this particular issue. And, um, we all really think about what's really important and that's what our residents need and what their residents need. And we need to, you know, maybe let things go and work together. And I hope for the best. So I'm in favor of this letter going out. And if we don't have any more questions or comments, um, I'd like to call a question. All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Number four. That the composite fees and charges by law be amended to include fee increases effective September 1st, 2024 of 10% increase for summer floor rentals, 20% increase for the gymnasium, 5% increase, all other rentals. Any questions or comments? Mayor Gordon.
Again, just a little context, a little dusting of context on here. So these numbers, I mean, Mr. Bressad, I'd love actually to get you to give us a little primer on this. Some people aren't just hearing from me. These, these pretty much came from the user groups, like the ball hockey guys were saying, you need to raise the rates for the ball hockey, the floor in the, in the gym and, and, uh, the, the, uh, summer floor rentals. They are absurdly low. They basically said, you guys are crazy and you, if you're looking for revenue, you need to raise our rates for us. I couldn't believe it when Tim said that, but he was, he's totally a team player. He really gets what we're trying to do here and understands, um, the deficit and how everyone needs to play their part. So maybe Dave, maybe you can fill us in, because I was not just big mouth here talking about it. How, how did you get to these numbers? Cause they look like big increases, but you know, when you actually do the math, it isn't. But how did you get to these and, and, uh, you know, just fill us in, because I know you, you spent a lot of time and effort, work, working at that group and then after the fact.
Uh, thank you, Mr. So yes, and ball hockey, like you said, uh, Tim Garrett and, uh, Jamie Robillard were clear that they felt they could absorb a 10% increase. We do do rate comparisons all the time. I have them in front of me right now for all of our municipalities around us. We fall sort of in the middle, but we've moved to the high side of things now. But the 10% for ball hockey and lacrosse, lacrosse didn't volunteer 10%. But, uh, ball hockey did. We felt it was a number that could be absorbed without impacting their ability to rent floor time from us. We felt that it was a number that we could do and not impact their service level. The same goes the gym, the 20% sounds high, but our gym rates are low. We've known they've been low for a while. 20% really is only $2.5 to $3 per hour for each gym. So you're not talking, 20% sounds high, but it's not a high number. 5% for the other things. So the ice, you're dealing with a high number. So it's, it's significantly higher. Our adult rates now are higher than everybody except for really in Berry. I think Springwater, but we're higher than Collingwood, Wasaga Beach, Pennington Machine. We're getting significantly higher on minor sports, uh, for our ice times. So we, we have to be careful with the tipping points, but we did feel 5%. We didn't raise rates last year. We froze the rates last year. With the freezing of rates last year, we saw about a hundred thousand dollars extra revenue this year. So our, our rentals are coming back to pre-COVID rates. So everything's going back in the right direction. We think we can absorb these rate increases without affecting, uh, the number of rentals in the facility. And, and we think we're, we are trending in the right direction with hall rentals, room rentals, all that stuff. So our revenue, I think will pass the 55,000. We, we put in numbers that we felt were very safe to say, but, uh, so that's sort of the rationale behind those.
And just a quick follow-up, Dave, this 5%, this isn't like a non-resident 5%.
No.
This is Midland taxpayers are, we're shouldering more water on our shoulders to try and make up the fact that we don't have a funding agreement with our neighbors. This is a, a across-the-board 5%, right? Or at least 10%, 20%, irrespective of where the participant lives or plays.
Yes, that's correct.
Counselor Paul.
Thank you. Uh, I know you said that you are confident that we will still get people renting the ice. I'm confident in that as well. My concern is the residents that are trying to put together, you know, a non-competitive Sunday night. Let's go on the ice and do a game and they are already priced out at our prices. They are, I know you probably have talked to them as much as I've talked to them or even more. Uh, the fact that they can't rent our, rent our ice now. Our prices are too high for like a local Midland taxpayer to come in and play hockey on a Sunday night with his friends. So yes, we can rent organizations, but at the end of the day, we still have to have a livability factor for our residents. And we can't just always be going for profit. Like I understand that we have to have profit, but it needs to come from other sources. It can't out, it can't completely eliminate the ability for somebody in our town to rent out our ice and be able to play hockey.
CFO.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, just wanted to point out, so the, the 5% increase for an adult, for example, is about 10 bucks. And so typically if you get 20 people on the ice, two bucks, right? So that brings the rate to just under 220 per hour, which was, yeah, about $11 per person.
I'm just speaking completely from residents complaints already that they don't have those 20 people. They maybe have 10, so they don't have the ability to, uh, to rent out the ice. It's several people have complained about it. So I understand that the numbers look good on paper, but the actuality of it is that Midland residents aren't able to rent it or ice right now.
Counselor, I, to speak to that honestly, and I play myself in a bunch of groups and, uh, you need 20 people to be able to afford the ice. It's, um, unless you have deep pockets, you need 20 people. I've heard most, most groups all have 20 people. I don't think we have very many rentals that have 10 or 11 people. And we do discount the ice after 10 PM. So it's, it's cheaper if you rent the ice later.
Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post. Um, yeah. Yeah, I think these rates increases are, are, are long overdue. I, for the first time this past winter, played pickleball with, uh, my wife and a, and a group of people. And, um, and she had to e-transfer some money and it was like 30 bucks or it was something ridiculously cheap. And then, and I thought it was per, you know, per person, per time we went out. And I go, no, that's, that's for the whole, the whole winter. And I just like, you know, don't, don't quote me on the 30 bucks, but it was cheap. So, and I, and I, I think I had a conversation with, uh, Mr. Bresset saying that the floor time's too cheap. Like it's just ridiculously cheap. And, um, and he said he knew, he knew that and I'm glad it's been addressed here. And still that, you know, on a, for a private gym hour, 2024, you get 12 people renting the gym. It's $2, it's under $3 per person. So, um, for an hour. So it's still fairly cheap. Um, well, it's cheap. So, um, but again, we have to be, uh, wary. And I think the, the three-year, um, with the three-year, in this report, you had a, a recommendation possibly coming to, to, I think in the 2025, uh, budget for a term agreement for our, our user groups. Is, uh, would, would these prices be, be, uh, determined in the 2025 draft budget? Or, or is this, uh, if it's going to go for a three-year term? I believe that's what I read in the, the report.
Add it on. Sorry, Mr. Counselor Meredith. Uh, that's number five, and that would be for 2025's budget, not this budget. Um, and that's one thing that the user groups all ask for, and it is something that we did do in past practice. It hasn't been done in a while, uh, but that way groups, groups are tired of every year being unsure as to what, if there's going to be a huge increase, if the, the non-resident thing's been talked about for a while. So they're really hoping we go back to like a three-year, uh, rate. So year one, 3%, year two, 3%, et cetera. However, council would decide to do it, uh, so that they can set their fees accordingly and know what they have to budget for.
Great. I guess we'll discuss that at number five. Sorry. I thought it was in the report, but, uh, I do have a question, but I'll, I'll, I'll save that for number five. Thanks.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. Just to point a clarity, because the word profit was used. Like Counselor Paul, I know you're just using that, I think colloquially, but there's no profit. We're not making any profit. We're in, we're losing our shirts. 1.8 million a year costs us to run the joint and we're only trying to recover 55K from non-residents. So like by raising these things, it's not, this isn't milk and the cow being profitable. We are just trying to lose less money. That's all. But just didn't want the media or anybody to pick up and think that we're making a profit out of this deal. I wish we were, but it never happens with sports and rec. That's just a hole in the ground you dump money into for the good of our kids and our, and our health, mental health and everything else that goes with it. So. I, I think that, I think you knew that, but I still, the word profit came out and it's like, I don't want, profit's not part of this conversation.
Thank you. Uh, I was meaning that obviously we need to make a profit, so we need to start raising rates. We need to look at profitability of the rec center. Obviously we're not making a profit now, but thank you for clarifying. I just saying, I don't know if council's going to support me with this, but to split the motion too. I would be in support of gymnasium, but I'm not in support of raising ice because I think that just based off what I just said with residents pricing them out of their own arena, I, I don't feel right about.
I don't think we can split that motion because that's one motion, like, like we've already split the, the whole motion into, and that's one part of it. Um, and I think from what we've heard, I, I don't think it, it's unreasonable at this time. Counselor Patel.
Thank you, Deputy. So, I mean, I looked at the rate, I studied them. I mean, the increases, I feel probably not enough for future expenses that might arise. Uh, I do recommend rounding up to the nearest, uh, zero rather than having, uh, you know, 15.47, 18.556, 30.96. It just looks cleaner and I think we can earn a couple of cents more. But the increases, I feel for future expenses that are going to come around, probably won't be enough. Thank you.
Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post through you too, Mr. Bresset. Just touch on that 5% uh, at the, uh, the, you know, when the user groups were discussing these increases. How did the 5% for the, um, ice rentals, uh, go over? And we heard, uh, CFO Baron say it was not all 10 to 10 or $10 or $2 per person if you had 20. So just, just give us some clarity on that, those, uh, debates.
Uh, Counselor Meredith, so how it was received? I would say our one major user group didn't receive it well. They wanted 0%, but we were 0% last year. The other major user group, uh, I thought received it well. So.
Madam CFO.
Sorry, just if I may, my, my math was wrong. I said $2. I meant 50 cents a person. Thanks.
We don't have any further. If we don't have any further comments or questions, um, you've heard the motion. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay, the last part. That is part of the 2025 budget process, a multi-year fee by law for the NSSRC be brought forward for council's consideration to allow for predictable rate increases for user groups. It's open for discussion. If anybody has any questions or comments, Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post. I, I just had a follow-up to when I, Mr. Bresset. So when, um, this, um, sorry, my glasses. If this goes through and then the three-year, or the multi-year, I guess it's not a three-year. It hasn't been determined yet. That the understanding is that fees will go up in that third year or fourth year or whatever the termination is. And, and how is that received? And are we going to have pushback? You know, depending on obviously what the, the rate increase is, but I'm sure we're going to be fair. If we're all sitting in the same seats, but, uh, everyone knows what next council's going to do. But, uh, just wanted to, uh, your perspective on that.
I'm not as strong as I thought. Counselor Meredith, that would be, um, again, we would bring it forward next year to council for you to review the rates. We would set the rates at what we think is fair to the user groups. I, I like to think we'd have discussions with the user groups again. Again, this was a past practice and it was received very well by the user groups. That way they could plan ahead and not have to go through the uncertainty. I know a few years back when there was discussion of matching Barry's rates and 33 per decibel increases in that, which caused pandemonium amongst the user groups. If we were to set, if council were to set a three-year rate increase, could be two years, could be three years. I wouldn't suggest more than three. In consultation with the user groups, while we set those rates, bring them to council. and then council would choose if they wanted to set those rates. I think that would be great for everybody. I think all the user groups would appreciate that, the stability of being able to plan further ahead.
Great, thank you. And I love that, you know, that structure, they know what they're going to be paying for the next three years. And it's great to be in conversation with your user groups and and bring in, you know, so everybody's on the same page. So, you know, every year we don't have a budget time, you know, those letters coming in and perfectly, you know, usually the same people because if it's a 5% and increase and another five, another five, but this is, this sounds great to me. And yeah, I'm all in favor for this. Thank you.
If there's no further questions or comments. All those in favor? Carrie. Okay, before we go on to the next one, I'm going to ask for a quick bio break. Oh, wait a minute.
Sorry Deputy Mayor, I was just going to ask if we could maybe deal with the next item. Because Captain Cale McLean has been sitting patiently for two and a half hours on those uncomfortable chairs. So I thought if we could deal with the fireworks by law and then take a break.
Yeah, that's, I think that's okay. Is that okay with everybody? I know, I was looking at him, but I thought he was enjoying this. Staff report CSR-2024-47 fireworks by law dated May 22, 2024 be received and that council approved by law 2024-33 fireworks by law as attached to this report. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor East and Counselor McDonald. Okay, now the floor is open for questions or comments. Counselor Meredith.
Thank you. I had pulled this report just, and I had asked for the 2023 bylaw and the 2024 bylaw, and I highlighted the differences between both. I didn't get that information, but I did get a phone call from our C A O and she, she kind of went through it with me, but maybe you can explain some of why, you know, because it's only been a year and there's some changes to the bylaw and why they were, you know, needed, why, why were they needed? Thank you.
Through the chair to Counselor Meredith. So I just want to preface the reasoning behind the change to the 2023 bylaw was to offer our citizens more of an inclusive bylaw for letting off fireworks for things such as religious holidays and things of that nature. So the bylaw was created and then in our annual review for what we're looking at and going through it, we've come up with a number of items that needed to be changed to offer more clarity to the citizens and to the businesses that are coming here to offer fireworks on those days. So clarification on things such as legislation, whether it be federal or municipal, as well as provincial, further clarity and differentiation on the different types of fireworks. So consumer fireworks versus display fireworks versus pyrotechnics, clarity on the permit process. So the previous bylaw held a singular permit that was sort of a catchall for all of the different events. Where we decided as a group that it would make more sense to separate that permit process to allow just for easier clarity and ability to do that and actually hold those events or let off consumer fireworks. And the other piece that we added to it as well was the clarity around the possible enforcement. So if people choose to go outside of that bylaw and do things that go against it, what the possible consequences could be and how we're actually able to enforce it. So the previous bylaw left essentially all of the responsibility upon the fire chief. Where in this bylaw, we've added a section for designating those powers. So for an individual like myself to be able to actually go out, conduct inspections and actually apply enforcement if there's any violations.
So basically, making it safer and stricter policy for the users and safer for the community and less risk. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. You know, whenever there's a change or, you know, I published this online because I do, these things that are coming up that could be contentious in the community. Phone calls and text messages and emails and people stopped me at the superstore today talking about this bylaw. So much like our burning bylaw, even though you come in and you get your permit, you do everything properly. If while you're having a backyard fire, whatever, then letting off some consumer fireworks, you do, you bother your neighbors. You know, they don't like the smell of the smoke that day, or maybe they don't like you. And so it's today, it's the smoke. That's the thing they're not liking. That, you know, your license to have a campfire in your backyard doesn't trump, you know, your impacts on your neighbors. So the people that have called me and they're concerned, you know, they don't want this going on in their neighborhood, let alone next door. You know, aside from, you know, a sweeping ban on fireworks entirely, which isn't being proposed here, and I don't know that there's necessarily an appetite for that. The onus is on the person who's using them to be responsible and respectful of their neighbor. And if they have neighbors that doesn't like them or doesn't like fireworks or their dog, you know, pees itself every time one goes off, which some animals really freak out to this. They don't like this. You know, I like the fact that there's G and this is what I cited to them, you know, where it says under section six G, no person shall discharge any consumer fireworks in such a place or in such, or in such a manner as to endanger, injure, harass, frighten, or constitute a nuisance to any person, animal, or property. So this is kind of the safety, you know, valve for this, that, you know, if you have a neighbor who just gets that permit and just gives her every weekend, even though he can't. It's not the O P P you call. It's not Mr. Smiley. I'm sure he'll be really happy in the back there that it's not his phone, it's ringing. You call our Midland Fire Service and just as with a burning complaint, they will attend and deal with that complaint accordingly. And it could be that the person next door, for example, is doing everything right, except that they're bothering you and you don't like fireworks. Or that's what you tell the investigator and that's the evidence they go on. So I just, that's my one bit of solace if I can offer to members in the community who maybe don't get along with their neighbors or they always have that one neighbor who doesn't know when to quit. There is, that's factored into this bylaw. Just as it is right on the permit that you post on your door when you're having a backyard fire, you can annoy your neighbor. With, you know, you can't burn diapers and tires, but you know, still, if you're burning clean wood and it's going in their windows, that you're not allowed to burn anymore because you're bothering somebody else. So that was my response at the superstore today, and I just wanted to share that. I committed to sharing that publicly while we're talking about it tonight, that although this, this has got lots of teeth in it, which is great. Nice to see good fines. I'm glad that it's the fire service. We work 24/7. We'll be enforcing this. It's, there's an escape clause for people that just take it too far or that just can't get along either side of that equation, get along with each other when they're doing things that bothers them either with sound or with smoke in these, in these two examples I'm using. So more of a call out than a question, but you know, is that new? Or did that exist in the last bylaw? Because I hadn't read it before.
Through the chair to your worship. So the wording wasn't as clear, similar to that of the fire safety wording where it can't, you can't let them off where it could possibly end up with debris or possibly damage a neighboring house. Was the same thing that we added to it, just to give us that catchall, similar to the burn bylaw where there's backyards in town that we know of that will not meet the size requirements to be able to have a fire. There's backyards in the town that won't meet the requirements to let off consumer grade fireworks. So the goal there was to give us enough power to be able to inspect and say, you know, unfortunately, due to the safety concerns based on the bylaw that you're unable to set off consumer fireworks in your backyard. But it also gives the ability to have people potentially have a way to let off fireworks, but in a manner that's going to be the most safe.
Thanks. And that was clear from the thorough read of this bylaw. So good work on tidying it up. And just speaking to the number change, as we're seeing bylaws come back to us. One recurring theme council will see is that we're not keeping the old number, you know, so if the original bylaw is from, you know, 2012. When we make an adjustment to it, we're given a new number for version control, rather than just tacking on amendments to these ancient bylaws. Because on their face, the name of the bylaw is the year and everything that was created, looks, makes these bylaws look really dated and it's hard for people to understand what's changed. So when we do make a material change, other than just a quick housekeeping one, you're going to start seeing now, especially the ones coming from Mr. Smiley, are all going to have new numbers with the new year. Even though there may not be humongous changes to it, we're just refreshing it so that the bylaws, you know, look like it's easy to tell when they've been last updated because of their naming convention.
Counselor McDonald. Does that happen?
I don't think your mic was working. The light was on, but we couldn't hear you come through the speaker. So you're asking, just pull it out a little bit. You're asking if, when we do this, does the old bylaw get rescinded? So yes, in the bylaw section in the agenda tonight, you'll see where we're you know, repealing the old one and replacing it with a new one. I believe, Madam Clerk, is that the process we're using moving forward?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, through to Counselor McDonald and your worship. Once a new bylaw is presented, then you'll see in the, in the title of the bylaw that we do repeal the old ones.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, before I call the question or the vote, I just wanted to thank you again. It was a pleasure having everybody here tonight. Our fire department is so valuable and so honored and respected in our community, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor.
So we've heard the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie.
Thank you.
Could we have a five minute? Thank you. Okay, we're back. So on to 12.3 CSR-2024-50, collection of boat launch fees. The staff report CSR-2024-50, collection of boat launch fees dated May 22, 2024 be received and that council approves immediately reinstating the daily boat launch fees that have been placed under review as part of the ad hoc parking committee review and recommendation. Can I ask for a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Ball and Counselor East. Okay, I'll open the floor for any questions or comments. Counselor East.
So I just, actually while you're here, Smiley, right? Sorry, my memory is a little foggy there. Come on up if I can. If we reinstated the fees, how is bylaw planning on enforcing them? Do we have some sort of direction in that way? And if we decided to not reinstate them, the second part of the question is, the people that have already paid the permit fees, will they be reimbursed? That's the second part of that question.
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor East. Yeah, the reason this was brought forward is because we thought that the parking program was put on hold, but this, we're trying to divide this into a boat launch fee and not parking. And that's why the report came from Karen. But yeah, like ethically, as of right now, we cannot enforce it. You know, but, but by reinstating this, you know, we will be able to, to do some enforcement there. Because we're selling the $100 permits to residents and the $200 permits to non-residents. But there's no way for people to pay because the parking machines have been removed or are in the process of being removed.
Through you Deputy Mayor. So the process would be that the public goes to the town dock to purchase the permits. And then the plan would be that you guys would be patrolling the boat launches on a regular basis. And if so, what is the plan for patrolling? Would it be, you know, six to eight o'clock at night? What are your plans with that?
Through you, through the chair to Counselor East, you know, if we, you know, as of right now, I'll let Karen speak to, speak to the piece about the harbor and selling the passes there. But yeah, if we can check all the boxes that every person has had the opportunity to pay and we can, we can continue to patrol. We usually have staff on the weekends between 9:00 a.m. to approximately 7:00 P.M. And yeah, we will actively patrol it. But, but as of right now, with, with, with no machine, you know, it's just not ethical to, to enforce it this time. So that's what we're trying to do. And Karen, if you have anything to add?
Through the chair to Counselor East. So yes, right now, the $100 resident annual pass and the $200 resident, non-resident annual pass are being sold by at the harbor and people can also come to the municipal office to purchase them. If you decide to not implement any of the fees, we will have to refund those funds that we've collected. The ones we're looking to have reinstated are the day use passes for a resident or a non-resident who just wants to launch and then take their boat out that same day. And if we proceed, we'll use the hotspot option. It's the app that you can install on your phone. You could also use it as your desktop computer. And then we'll put up new signage for that as well. We'll have a meeting. It's probably take about a week for hotspot to put this in place. We have a tentative meeting scheduled with them to go through the options and have them update the app for us.
Counselor Patel.
Through you Deputy. So my question is, I don't see what, is there a penalty for violating for not purchasing the permit? And if there is, what is the amount?
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Patel. There is a penalty. In our parking bylaw, the charge for parking at a boat launch without a valid permit is $80 for the early fine and $90, you know, after seven days. And the reason it's, it's one of our higher ones, but the reason for that is, you know, it was $50 to launch your boat. So the penalty needed to kind of match that because, because people are willing to take their chances.
So just to follow up, maybe looking into having a higher fee to deter people taking a chance on the $50 in the region of over 150 or something? Just, just a question.
Through the chair to Counselor Patel, absolutely. You know, that's something that we identified in the bylaw review and prioritization report that, that our fines are a little light compared to other municipalities. And that's something we want to update.
I just have a question. When they purchase their parking or their pass, that, is that a piece of paper that is put in the windshield of their car or is the car actually registered?
To the chair. They, we give them a sticker that they put in their dash. We also record their license plate and we collect their name and their telephone number as well.
Okay, thank you. I'm just thinking sometimes people have multiple cars, right? Or they could be with a friend going out in the boat and they're using a different vehicle. Would they have the ability to, they don't have the ability to put something in their dash to protect them if they've already paid?
If they purchased an annual pass, it's for that one vehicle, it goes in that one vehicle.
Thank you. Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. I think just to go further on that, you have to actually affix the sticker to your window too. You can't just put it on like a slidey plastic thing that you can pass over to the other car. It's an offense to not decal it, like affix it to your window, I think, if I recall correctly, which makes sense because, you know, otherwise it is just handed off. So just again, to reiterate, right now we have this kind of black hole, this void. We, we've kind of painted ourselves in a corner. We have our parking conundrum we're going to deal with this year with the parking committee getting underway. And Counselor East, you're back. So you're going to be on that bad boy. And we'll come up with something sustainable. But what we kind of, what fell through the cracks was the boat launch. And you know, there's no free boat launches in municipalities around us. We've aligned our fees and harmonized them. So we're like with Penetang, which you actually get a bit more services at because there's humans there and a little hut. And I think that was our goal. Counselor Meredith has brought up that as a, is like an objective was for us to get a little hut and a person there to be an ambassador and also to police that, that boat launch so that every person that uses it has a pass, a day use pass, a season's pass. And no one's, you know, using it for free unless you come at 11 o'clock at night, you know? And there's always going to be that. But to make this fair and equitable. So we agreed on a reasonable fee. Now for a, a change this year, we've actually given non-residency ability to pass, which they didn't have before. They had to pay the, pay to play. So the one missing piece though, is that we didn't have the, we didn't lock this down and check enough boxes that, you know, bylaw could in good faith go in and enforce. And to, to the comment about, you know, let's make these fees a bit more of a disincentive and higher. I, I'd be all for that too, because if their people are going to roll the dice and figure off, bylaw is not going to catch me. You know, I'm of the mind, well, why don't we just call the local towing company? And there's the truck and the trailer off, it goes to impound. That'll be the last time you ever roll the dice at our, at our boat launch, right? That, but that's probably a little overbearing, but that's, you know, as someone who's used boat launches before and haven't been able to find a place to park, even though I've paid and have my sticker, it's frustrating. So step one though, is we just need to be able to enforce what we got in place. We've lowered the bar, we made it more accessible to our non-resident neighbors to use this amazing little boat launch we have that, you know, quite frankly, if you get out into Midland Bay, you're a lot closer to Bozalay and other good spots than you are in Penetang Bay. We don't have the speed zone to contend with either. You can just hammer down as soon as you get out past the sailing club. So there's a lot of reasons why people love the Midland Boat Launch. So I, I think this, this is a well thought out approach. It's a stopgap, you know, it's an app. I get it. Not everyone has a cell phone with data. But I would argue that the lion's share of people that can afford a, a boat and a truck to pull it and a trailer and everything, they have insurance and they have a smartphone. And if for some reason they decide to go boating without their smartphone, which I think was a, you know, unwise decision, but let's say they did, they can at home purchase the, this, this permit or they can go to the harbor office. So there's really no good argument why we wouldn't do this for this year while we come up with a longer term solution and which will be melded into whatever parking 2.0 or 3.0, I guess it would be, ends up being for the town. So I think this is a good, a good way forward for this year. Lets us monetize it. While we try and get our ducks in a row and come up with, whether we're going to put a hut down there and staff it and, you know, really try and raise some revenues from this boat launch that'll help maintain the quality of the boat launch and of course the docks that go with it. And dare say, maybe even because it's all part of the harbor money, maybe even help feed into the harbor to offset some of our costs at the harbor where we could then hire security. You know, we were talking to Coffee about the need for security down at harbor to stop, you know, some of the non-residents wandering onto people's boats, you know, and helping themselves and their generators or, you know, just being on the boats. Like so there's, we need money to do that. And so this asset's a way to do that. So I think this is a well thought out report. It's a good way to deal with our issue for 2024 as we move into 2025 with some new solutions and hopefully some funding to go with those. So I, I'm fully in support of these recommendations. You know, I'd love it, I'd love it to be free. It'd be awesome if it would be free. But free just means Midland taxpayers in totality are, are paying for it. And, you know, Midland taxpayers are stretched pretty thin right now, especially the ones that don't have the money for a boat and don't ever use this asset. So pay for what you use. It's an ongoing mantra that I use when I'm having debates about fees with people. And it's a hard win to, to win the argument against because if you're not paying for what you're using, you're stealing it. So someone's got to pay. So anyway, good work on the report and I fully support it.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. I'm in agreeance. I think this report is really great. I think the options of being able to think about smartphones as well as the harbor office were well thought out. And I think that this is one of those multi-item motions that was passed and this kind of slipped through the cracks. So I'm glad to see this come back and it caught before the beginning of the season. And so I'm in full support of this. Thank you.
Counselor Meredith.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Post. I do like the, the ask here for the hotspot app. And then obviously to, if you're, don't have a smartphone, to get it at the Harbor Master. So I, I think there's, there's a need to charge, charge here. The one thing that we did talk about when passing, when bringing, charging for the boat launches that the, the, the money generated from the boat launch stays in the boat launch fund to, for the upgrades. And I understand there's some major upgrades happening this year and probably ongoing, I mean. And so when you're talking about harbor and, and I'm glad we're separating and it's not parking, it's not intermixed with parking. So when you're talking with harbor, I just want to make sure that, you know, when we agreed to this, it was supposed to be strictly for the boat launch area that these, when, when we do generate some funds that it's spent down there. So, and another thing is, is coming in the 2025 budget, I'll, I'll be bringing back my, my ask to have an attendant down there in a, in a different kind of format once we get the parking meter issue resolved. So, and it should be cost effective and hopefully generate increased revenue. Because the one complaint I had from last year is a guy who paid for his, whether it's his daily launch or his, you know, season launch, is that people in front of him, could be four or five people that didn't pay, got away with it. And there was no fairness in that. He paid, he has to wait. Whereas, so I think the increased, increased bylaw patrol in the summer months, especially if you know, it's a sunny day. I was there this weekend launching our boat. I actually did see bylaw go by. And obviously I, I didn't have a, I couldn't pay for my daily launch because there's no machine. So I didn't understand how he would, but he was patrolling, which is great. But there was a lot of people down there. So, so there is a need for, you know, some constant, constant patrolling of that area to, to make sure that the, the ones that aren't paying, you know, keeping them honest. So, so the ones that are paying that, you know, you set a precedent there that, you know, you know, if someone gets, if you pay and someone gets caught, makes you feel pretty good that you paid. So. But anyways, I support this and hopefully we can improve upon this next year and have an attendant there with some service. And I think it'll make the, uh, make the boaters really happy down there. Thank you.
If there's no more questions or comments, you've heard the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Carrie? On to 12.4 CSR dash 24 dash 52 Sixth Street Parking Review. That staff report CSR dash 2024 dash 52 Sixth Street Parking Review, May 27th, or sorry, May 22nd, 2024 be received and that council approves the following approach related to the Sixth Street Parking, Parking Review as shown on attachment number three. That the current stop, stop prohibited on the east side of Sixth Street from Young Street to 220 meters northerly be maintained. That a new park prohibited section be added on the east side of Sixth Street from 220 meters north of Young Street to Hugel Avenue. That the current stop prohibited on the west side of Sixth Street from Young Street to a point of 20 meters northerly be maintained. That the current parking prohibited on the west side of Sixth Street from Young Street to 150 meters north between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, Friday, be replaced with parking prohibited at all times from a point 20 meters northerly from Young Street to a point of 67.5 meters northerly from Young Street. That the current park prohibited on the west side of Sixth Street from 220 meters north of Young Street to Hugel Avenue be amended to allow for parking from a point 67.5 meters northerly from Young Street to Hugel Avenue. That the current parking permissions and restrictions on Seventh Street be maintained. That bylaw 2021 dash 24 being a bylaw to regulate parking within the town of Midland be amended to reflect the proposed changes as shown in attachment number four to this report. Can I have a mover and a second or? Counselor Patel? Counselor Ball? Okay, the floor is open for any questions or comments. Counselor Ball.
I just wanted to, I guess clarification that Seventh Street on that one side, they are able to stop and park right now. There's no highlighted.
Counselor Ball, do you mind repeating that for me?
Sorry, if you bring up the diagram that is highlighted on one side of Seventh Street, they are allowed to park there is my question for us for clarification.
Yeah, absolutely.
So my next question is what happens when they complain, like Sixth Street residents have complained? How are we alleviating this issue?
Well, alleviating the, the fact that there's parking on one side of the street, not on the other? I, I don't understand.
And not on Sixth Street now? There's no stopping, no parking on Sixth Street?
No, absolutely. I, I think you're misunderstanding. You know, you know, if you look at attachment number three to the report, it's, it's what, what we're proposing. And that is to maintain the, the stop prohibited section on the east side of the road, about halfway to Hugel and then continue that with park prohibited all the way to Hugel. And then that will leave most of the west side of the street available for parking, which, which is kind of what the, what brought this all about and the debutantes wanted was more parking. You know, because, because even the, even the timed park prohibited parking that was on the west side of Sixth Street, you know, it, it, it didn't even allow, it wasn't even like during school hours. It was, I can't, I can't remember exactly what it said, but it was, I think it just said between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. It didn't even, you know, so that, that, that includes the weekends as well. So this, we felt this solution, this proposal, you know, kind of takes into account everybody. And, and, you know, it kind of mimics what's going on on Seventh Street. And, but also it, it now will allow parents to, you know, come down Sixth Street and drop their children off on the west side of the street, which is where the sidewalk is, just to allow that safe passage. So.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. There's been so much discussion on this that it's been getting a bit confusing. So I wanted to clarify the diagram. So I appreciate that. And I just was wondering if that 15-minute parking drop-off type situation had been looked at as opposed to the no parking and the parking? Because I didn't, I didn't see that in this report. So I'm just wondering if that was talked about or if that this was a preferred option by the school board or if that was just not thought about at all? Because I know in other school zones, and I know Counselor McDonald brought it up previously, that most of the other school zones just have that 15-minute parking for drop-off and pickup during those hours of school drop-offs and pickups. I'm just wondering if that was looked at.
Through the chair to Counselor Ball, yes, that was looked at. That wasn't the preferred option. It, it is actually mentioned in the report in the options, alternative section. But it's not something I would recommend just because it's, it's more onerous on staff because it's at least the two visits. And, and in my time here, it's been over two years. We've issued one ticket and that was at the, at the post office in the, in that 15-minute zone where someone parked there all day. So it's not something we, we enforce regularly. But, you know, so that's why I, I didn't recommend that, but we did look at it.
Thank you. This has been a, a hard issue to tackle. So I appreciate it.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Post. Through you to Mr. Smiley. I'm curious, when meeting with Monday Bay and the Sincro County District School Board on March 7th, was the lack of parking area for staff in the unused school drop-off zone on Sixth Street addressed?
Through the chair to Counselor McDonald. Yes, that was discussed because it was part of our letter that kind of engaged them in conversation. And, and the principal told me it took great offense to it. But, you know, we, which is okay because we got the results, I think, that we're looking for. And, you know, their, their response was that all those people, there, there does seem to be a string of vehicles that are parked on Seventh Street. And he, he, he said that's not his staff that's parking there. And, and even when Mr. Ferguson and I went to that meeting, you know, we ended up parking on Seventh Street because, because we, we were of the impression that there wouldn't be any. But then sure enough, we walked in the front door and saw a few spots that we could have used. So. So yeah, it was discussed. They do use that, the kiss and ride, I think. And we discussed the one on Seventh Street, that's for the buses. So, but it's not for, you know, but people are permitted to drop off their childrens in the kiss and ride, drop and, and continue on.
Okay, well, I'll check that out for sure. And it, I, I have a, a friend that lives on Seventh Street. She knows the person teaches there and that person parks in front of her house all day. So someone's not aware of this.
I don't want responding to that, but sometimes people lie to me. It's terrible.
I have a couple of more questions. If I may, yes. Um, why is there no stopping signs for 20 meters on the east side of Seventh Street? The way there is on Sixth Street?
Yeah, that's, Counselor McDonald, that's a tough one to answer. I'm not sure why they went that route. I know, you know, there is a parking charge for park within nine meters of any intersection. And that's over 20, that's over 20, 29 feet. So, you know, I think in this case, it was put on, it was park prohibited on Seventh Street and it's stop prohibited on, on Sixth Street just to make more awareness. And I, I can't explain why it was done that way. But, but, but I, I will say that in most municipalities, a stop prohibited offense is more serious than a park prohibited offense. In, in our municipality currently, they're exactly the same set fine. So that's something as we've identified in the bylaw review and prioritization report that we want to address and make it a little more serious. But yeah, we just want to keep the kids away from the intersection as, as, and it's not an appropriate place for people to stop because people are turning left and, you know, from Young Street. So it causes a huge bottleneck when, when there are vehicles illegally parked like that.
Go ahead. Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, Madam Church. So just, just to add to that, should council approve the recommendation? What we'll do is, as we, because we're going to have to install new signs in that area as well and remove old ones. So we'll do an inventory of both streets to make sure that the signs are in the correct positions. There's the signs are, are, are there so that, so we'll, we'll do an inventory of Sixth and Seventh. Should council approve this and we have to change signs. So.
Yes, a more comment. This plan is much better than what currently exists. And I'm grateful for that. And but significant changes with additional parking on school property should, is required, I, I think to, or a, a better kiss and ride situation. It's the school's problem, not ours. And I think we should continue to pursue it. And I think we should continue to pursue it with the school board. Whether they like it or not.
I don't remember who was next, so Mayor Gordon. Oh, okay.
Wrong bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post, uh, to you, Mr. Smiley. Um, on the, um, the, uh, number three attachment on the, um, west side of Sixth Street where you have the, uh, no parking. It goes from parking and then it's right by, um, basically no parking from, uh, going up from Young Street, uh, on the, on the west side. Why wouldn't we extend that, uh, parking all the way down to the no stopping in in the red on the west side, uh, on the west side? What is the purpose of that no parking little bit?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Meredith, uh, you know, during our meeting there on March seventh, it 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 just was wasn't identified as something that didn't need to be there. And, you know, I do think see value in it because it provides people who are using the kiss and ride a better opportunity to 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 move out onto the street. So so that's why we wanted to keep that, to encourage people to use the, uh, you know, closer to Hugel area and and the sidewalk to provide safe passage, uh, to school and, uh, uh, also, you know, but, you know, if that's council's will to have that removed, that can be accommodated.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it met some type of, uh, law with the transportation or like how you kind of explained on the previous, uh, to, um, Counselor McDonald. Um, I'm just wondering with the residences, um, there on the 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 no stopping side, which is, uh, the 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 east side. That means if they had company over or so forth, they'd have to kind of go up the street a little bit to park. That's the only, um, issue that, uh, may arise from this. I mean, I think it's 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 a good compromise in every way. I I like the report and and so forth. That's the only little jug, uh, so might have a little setback there, but, uh, I guess we can come back if there is, not that I want to come back to Sixth Street parking, um, but, uh, um, uh, Mr. Farkerson has a has a comment. Go ahead.
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, just just on that little, a little section there. Um, when we were doing our site walk with the school, the principal actually indicated that staff were parking up on the boulevard there. So and he even admitted himself that he, but at one point parked there. So they wanted to ensure that there was, there was no parking occurring there. And as well, um, as Mr. Smiley indicated, if there's allowed to be stopping there, it has the potential of blocking out that kiss and ride. Uh, and then we've got it, we've we've got a mess there. So it allows for there to be no blockage of that driveway so that the kiss and ride can function as it's supposed to. So that was the intent of of keeping that that little section, uh, within the bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Patel.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. So, um, it looks like it's a pretty big overhaul of what we're doing. And I'm assuming it's for going to be for the new school year, uh, moving forward. Will there be communication from the school that we can relay? That parents would understand that there's major changes happen because, you know, humans are habitual animals and they'll continue doing what they're doing and not pay attention to the signs. Attaching balloons could be an option, but I'll leave that to you.
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Patel. Yeah, we've been in communication with, uh, Monday's Bay Public School through this whole process. And, uh, yeah, if we get the approval tonight from council, we will touch base with them after we we talk to, uh, Mr. Flannery's people and find out what the timeframe is that we can get this done. And, uh, yeah, we we will educate and we'll maybe we we could even do an education approach for a little bit. Uh, but, you know, uh, people are parking illegally habitually as well, so, um.
Through you, deputy. So again, I'm going to go back to the fines that I saw in the report. We need to maybe look at it and, uh, make it stiffer so we can avoid, uh, all the commotion that goes on around Monday's Bay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post, through you to, uh, Mr. Farkerson. You had you had, uh, mentioned that you're going to remove the the stop signs from, um, uh, Sixth and Seventh Street. And if there, this is just a request, not pertaining to, just pertaining to the 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 stop signs that you're removing. If there are stop signs that just are are parking signs, sorry, that are just the P with a slash across it, if you can transport those down to the, uh, Bayport area as you go into, uh, the Midland Sailing Club on the left hand side, the fence line, there's no parking signs that have faded, you that you can't even tell there's no parking. I had put this request in over a year ago, said they were on order. So hopefully we maybe we will recycle those and put them on that fence line if possible.
Uh, through Deputy Mayor. Apologies if that went in a while ago, uh, that should be something we should be addressing much quicker. Uh, if you're referring to the, sorry, west side of the entrance as you're going into the, uh, Sailing Club, you said?
Yes, I I believe it's, uh, when, uh, Mr. Campbell was our our CIO for an interim, uh, the request went out to him. And he said that that they were ordered, but yes, um, on the left hand side, on the fence chain link fence. Um, as you're going into the Midland Sailing Club, there's a bunch of signs there and I believe there are no parking that you can't even tell, but I believe there are no parking. But I may be wrong, but, um, I just thought maybe if we recycle those signs, we could put them there.
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Meredith. Actually, I I wasn't aware of that, uh, request last year, but we, one of my officers proactively observed that and sent an email to, uh, Mr. Flannery's team and they have been ordered, so, uh, oh, uh, yeah, yeah, it's, uh, I I emailed, uh, Mr. Turnbull and he's, uh, getting that done.
Perfect, thank you.
Through you, Madam, just for clarification, you said stop signs, we're not removing stop signs. So, uh, and yeah, if there is existing part, no, no parking signs, no stopping that we can reuse for signs that are faded or whatever, we'll leave it with the operations group to see if they can reuse those. But, uh, it sounds like your other question is being addressed right now. Thank you.
Mayor Gordon, you.
Thanks, I just wanted to circle back to the east side of Seventh, um, the stop prohibited. That's really, it makes more sense that that's for school buses to be able to get by. These things need a lot of room to be able to pull in and that's where all the school buses go. So and then you also think of Blue Garden Restaurant. I know, uh, from the owners there, they have parents parking in their parking lot, using up spaces for their customers or blocking their customers who park legally on their parking lot and they're blocked. And when their customers go out going, hey, man, I got my Chinese food, can you move your car? And they're like, ah, no, just give me a few minutes waiting for my kid. Like, it's just, it's ridiculous, actually, that that would even happen, that someone would have that kind of entitlement. So I I'm glad we're taking a look at this. This is not just a Monday's Bay issue, like, to be fair, all of our schools incur this kind of insanity twice a day, uh, throughout the whole school season. And as I've admitted numerous times, I was one of those parents on Seventh Street, dropping my kids off to French immersion because there's no school bus for them and picking them up when they were little ones. So I I've been part of that mess and I get it. So I I think what we're trying to do now is remedy this on Sixth Street, although they proponent originally, you know, her request was she wanted parking in front of her house and she lives on the east side and we're prohibiting that through this. But it makes perfect sense to me that we're allowing parking on the west side because you don't want the little ones darting out between parked cars and trying to cross the road. So, you know, while this is not putting a smile on everyone's face, it's one of those compromise things where I think people get it. And really, that's the best kind of decision. Uh, you know, you made a good compromise when nobody's really leaving smiling, but they all get it. So I think this is, uh, worthy of continued conversations with the school, um, because, you know, obviously they they're the reason this is happening, but I mean, it's a school and it's not a new problem by any stretch of imagination. So we're just trying to bend ourselves into pretzel to accommodate safety and and our resident concerns, which are equally important. Uh, but we always got to put the safety of the kids above, you know, inconvenience of not having a neighbor or a friend parked in front of your house. And and that's the way it really boils down to, unfortunately. So I I appreciate this approach. I'm sorry that the first one, you know, went over like a lead balloon and we sent you packing to come back with round two. Um, but this is, this is good. It seems to be resonating with council. Um, I haven't had, you know, any real negativity back from the original proponent who I've been communicating with. I know other couple of our counselors have too. Uh, so I'm going to assume that she gets it and that it's seems reasonable and we're doing what we can to try and eliminate the mayhem that does happen there twice um, per day during the school year and outside of school season, this is a non-issue. Obviously, or weekends, non-issue. So I I appreciate the efforts and the fact that we sent this back, you know, and you had to go back to work on it and do site walks and go visit with the school and perhaps ruffle some feathers. Uh, but that, you know, at the end of the day, that's what we asked you to do and you did it, so good for you. And you let us know if there's something else we you need from us, um, to make life easier on these kind of things, whether it's Monday's Bay or St. Teresa's, which also has a log jam, you know, twice a day, or, you know, I'm thinking on school on Ottawa Street, Bayview, or also was one of those parents. So I I empathize with the, uh, the residents, um, and I empathize with the parents who struggle because they don't have another way to get their kids to school. And I also empathize with the re the, uh, school that, you know, has the untenable situation of having finite car storage, uh, for their their rushes, the surges twice a day. So all in all, thanks for bringing this report back. I'm not going to try and tweak or tinker with it. I think you did a good job and let's try it out for size for a couple of years and, uh, see how it goes.
Okay, council, you've heard the motion, all in favor? Oh, wait a minute.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to point out that the motion that you were provided was an earlier version, so recommendation number two has changed. So I'm just going to give you the the proper recommendation for number two and you can just read that one in. Number one has stayed the same.
Okay, so number two. That a new bylaw be enacted to reflect the proposed changes as reflected in recommendation number one. Council, you've heard the motion, all in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Okay, we're at twelve point five CSR dash twenty twenty four dash fifty four, Little Lake Park Stage and Banshell Construction Project. I have a motion here moved by Counselor Ball, seconded by myself. That council move into closed session and further that this portion of the meeting be closed to the public pursuant to section two thirty nine of the municipal act two zero zero one, two thousand and one, as indicated. Section two thirty nine, two E litigation or potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board. Section two thirty nine, two I, a trade secret or scientific technical, commercial, financial or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which if disclosed could reasonably be reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly and competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group, group of persons persons or organization. Little Lake Stage and Banshell Construction Project. Um, is everybody okay to move into closed session? All in favor? Any opposed? That's carried, we're now enclosed. Okay, now we're back in open session. Um, I have a motion here that pursuant to section six point two E of procedure bylaw twenty twenty two dash two, council agrees to remain in session past ten PM in order to deal with the remaining items included on the agenda. Can I have a mover and a second or please? Uh, Mayor Gordon and, uh, Counselor East. All in favor? Opposed? Oh. Just give me a second. Okay, carry on. That staff report CSR dash twenty twenty four dash fifty four, Little Lake Park Stage and Banshell Construction Project, May twenty second, twenty twenty four be received and that council receives this report as information and that council approves the reallocation of capital funds to complete the Little Lake Park Banshell Roof Rotary Stage Roof Edition. Um, can I have a mover and a second or? Actually, I already, I already have one, um, uh, Counselor Bald and Counselor Meredith. Do we have any questions or comments? Mayor Gordon.
Thanks, uh, based on the analysis and the fact that this is, um, you know, no shock is going overrun, um, on costs. Even notwithstanding the fact that the Ontario Trailing Foundation was kind enough to grant us effectively a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards this project. I just don't think that right now is the responsible time to, uh, to fund an over overage of this, you know, magnitude. Although it's, you know, this addition is something that I've been chatting up and a lot of people have been looking forward to. It just, it's costing too much. Um, there's other things we can do with that money in our community right now. And, uh, I'm led to believe that by returning unused grant funds, uh, it does not negatively impair your ability to uh, successfully compete for grant funding in the future. Uh, because you're looked at as being a responsible government, not just, you know, spending what you were given for the sake of spending it. Uh, and I got this from provincial sources, uh, that I have no reason to disbelieve. So I think, uh, option one, which is presented here, cancel the project and return the OTF grant funds of one hundred and forty nine thousand nine hundred and come back to council next year requesting new funding for the project would be the responsible thing for our ratepayers right now. Uh, just given the soaring costs. I'm not even expecting things to go down next year. I just, I think we'll have to revisit whether that's a tactical priority when there's other capital needs for the park that, um, you know, we're hoping to see, like the splash pad, for example, which is going to have a lot of zeros. Um, and other improvements to the stairs and continuing improvements. And maybe just dealing with the stage, which is starting to become decrepit and maybe we need to do something to it. Um, we don't have the option to spend this grant money on other things. It had to be for what we requested and what we rewarded it for. And I just don't see the juices being worth the squeeze in this case. So, you know, I've asked council to consider option one and, uh, you know, not happy about it, but it, I think it's the responsible path forward, given the circumstances.
Counsel, Counselor East. Oh, sorry. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, in our haste to return to formal session, we forgot to do the motion arising out of closed. So we can just put this conversation on hold for a moment and then you should have a motion to read from the closed session.
Sorry, I did that backwards. Okay, so this motion was moved by Counselor Bald, seconded by Counselor McDonald. That the closed meeting of council be adjourned at nine fifty eight PM and that council now rise and report to open session. I think I read that. That's not it. Okay, so this motion was moved by Counselor Bald and seconded by Counselor Meredith. That council receive as information the confidential verbal update provided by staff at the closed meeting session of council held May twenty second, twenty twenty four with respect to the Little Lake Park Stage and Banshell Construction Project. All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, carry.
Deputy Mayor, you can now continue the conversation with the motion that was put on the floor.
Okay, I'll read the motion and then. I'll get you. Okay, I'm going to read the motion and then I'm going to open the floor. The staff report CSR dash twenty twenty four dash fifty four Little Lake Park Stage and Banshell Construction Project. May twenty second, twenty second, twenty twenty four be received and number one. The council receives this report for information and two, that council approves the reallocation of capital funds to complete. The Little Lake Park Banshell Roof Rotary Stage Roof Edition. And I did read that. Councillor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy, Deputy Mayor Post. Just want to. Ask this question here, just so I'm clear on this. This, this was about approving the additional funding. Correct? And that. If we do not approve the additional funding, the, the original budget still stands. And we. Go possibly forward with that if council approves. A structure of some, of some sort. Don't know what to say. Is that correct? Because I'm just a little confused here, what, what Mayor Gordon just stated about giving the grant back and, and everything, but.
Madam Clerk?
Money only, the additional funds for this, right? Correct. Thank you.
Councillor East.
So I think it's true Deputy Mayor Post. I think it's basically responsible. To choose option one at this time. We just cannot afford to pursue a project like that. So option one. Alright.
Councillor Ball.
Thank you. Option one is not on the floor, right? We'd have to do amended motion for that. I'm not suggesting we do one. I'm just, okay, perfect. So I think that we should not approve the additional funds, but we should continue with the project.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Perhaps as a point of clarification, the motion's on the floor as was recommended in the staff report. So you were voting on whether you support that recommendation or you can choose to defeat the recommendation. And the, the recommendation was to reallocate funds. If council chooses not to reallocate funds, then you would defeat this motion.
Madam Clerk, would, would I raise an amendment to take option one and basically negate the discussion around what's on this report? And let's just deal with option one as direction? If I had a seconder, is that the proper way to deal with option one on this report? I didn't want to do it in the first instance because I didn't want to kill a conversation around this entire project, but. Oh, fair enough. I don't want to be in a bad position either.
Thank you for your patience. If council chose to defeat the recommendation that, or the motion that's on the floor, you can defeat that. And then the mayor could present the new motion, which would be option two. Or option. One on page two of the staff report. So we could prepare a motion for council to consider. They don't go against each other.
That's fine. So we won't table an amendment. We're good. We'll, we'll just carry on discussion around this until we call the question.
Councillor McDonald. If we defeat the motion that's before us, why would it be necessary? To say that we're returning the money? Because it would be returned because we're not proceeding with the. Cancel. Option one is to cancel the project. There's a different option one?
I believe. Deputy, Deputy Mayor Post. I believe the funds that we're talking about in your, the motion that's on the floor. Are not the grant funds. There are additional funds within. Okay, so, so if we, if, if council chooses to not. Go with the motions on the floor, you just didn't move more money to the project, but the project still exists. Then if, if council chose to cancel the project, they're welcome to do that. But, but I think it needs to be, it's, you don't need to, to cancel the project. That's up to council's decision. But you, if you can't, if you defeat the first motion, all you're saying is I'm not putting more money into it at the moment. Okay, that's, that's what you'd be saying by defeating that. And then you could do nothing and carry on with the project, or you could choose at this time or some future time to cancel the project. At which time the monies would not, the funding, additional funding would not become available to you if you cancel the project. I, I trust that's helpful.
Thank you. You've heard the motion? All in favor? Seeing none? Yeah, opposed? That's carried.
It's defeated.
Alright, defeated.
Well, you don't have to do anything now. You could just do nothing, but if the mayor wants to do something, that's okay. No, I, I, I wouldn't do it right now, but I mean, he can do it. You can't undo this motion. You can't say now I'm going to do it again. But this is a different thing entirely. They can do it regardless.
Okay, Mayor Gordon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So pursuant to the instructions, now would be the opportune time then to table a motion. To cancel the project and return the OTF grant funds of a hundred and forty nine, nine and come back to council next year requesting new funding for. This project if council so desired. Madam Clerk, is that the right? I just need a seconder or?
Thank you. I think the best approach would be to present it as a notice of motion. Because it's not on the agenda.
That's why I want to do an amendment because it's written as option one on the report. And whenever there's options on a report, council usually can, they're there for a reason for us to, to action. As an alternative to the staff recommendations, but it was recommended I didn't do that. I mean, it doesn't, it makes no difference whether we cancel tonight or in three weeks. That's fine, but I'm just, for clarity. If options are available to council, they're on reports and we do this routinely. If this is now breaking tradition, then don't put options on the report and we'll just vote things down and come up something new.
My apologies, but I don't think it impacts the outcome you're looking for. So my apologies if, if that was confusing to you, but I don't think it impacts what you, what your intention is. And it does give people time to think about it. And it does also give the public time to think about because they haven't seen that as a motion.
No, that's fair, but I just want clarity that when there are option one, two, three, whatever on the staff report. They're there for consideration while we're deliberating the recommendations on the staff report. Is that, is that a correct statement?
And, and that's why I gave you my apologies, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sir, I thought you were apologizing. I was misunderstanding it. Okay, that's fine. I'm good with that. And not meant, not meaning to be argumentative at all. I just want to make sure we're following policy and that we stick consistently through it. So I'm, I'll wait till the appropriate time in our agenda to table a notice of motion and we'll deal with it on the twelfth.
Okay, number twelve. Do we have any notices of motion? Mayor Gordon.
Well, councillor McDonald had her hand up first. She beat me to it. So I'm content to go last. You all know what I'm going to say, so.
Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post. I, I have a, a notice of motion. Requesting funding regarding funding requests for the symposium. And what shall I read? I guess I may as well read it. As. It's regular, at its regular meeting with closed session on May first, twenty twenty four. Council passed a resolution. Twenty twenty four, one, five, seven directing staff. I didn't think it was a closed session. I'll look into that. Let me start over. At its regular meeting. On May first, twenty four, council passed a resolution, twenty twenty four dash one, five, seven directing staff to initiate. The planning and hosting of a second hope housing and health symposium. And that the county of Simcoe has advised that it would not be providing any funding, staffing or assistance with respect to organizing. And planning of the symposium for twenty twenty four. And the council approved that a third party be, be retained for this symposium. And that funding for this twenty twenty four initiative of twenty five thousand be approved from a tax rate stabilizing reserve. So that gives us the go ahead to start planning. If we have some money, that's my notice of motion. I hope to have your support. And thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor, with respect to the motion, it was a regular meeting of council with closed session. It wasn't in closed session. So the motion was correct.
Okay, thank you. That, after I stroked it, I realized where I was there. It's all a learning process, right? You'll probably have to remind me again.
Councillor East.
You. Deputy Post, I have two notices of motion. One, that staff investigate the possibility of placing two floating docks in Little Lake. With one to be used as swim platform. And the other to be used for fishing and launching kayaks and small aluminum boats. And that staff, that a staff report be presented to council at a future meeting. And then my second. Notice of motion. The mayor had spoken about, sorry? Oh, okay. Okay, right here. So, that staff investigate the feasibility of allowing overnight camping in Little Lake Park on long weekends in the summer. And that a staff report be presented to council at a future meeting.
Thank you, councillor East. Mayor Gordon.
Anybody else got one? Okay. That cancelled, effectively the council authorizes the cancellation of the. Project Little Lake Park Stage and Banshell Project. Sorry, I'm having to wordsmith this on the fly. And return the OTF grant funds of a hundred and forty nine thousand nine hundred dollars. And we'll just leave it simple like that. We're not promising to come back with anything new later. So easy peasy. If you would like me to submit that to you. Technically, council, we're supposed to have these things written on a document and file them with the clerk instead of just freewinding them as we do, but you're very forgiving, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. That's my one for next, next meeting.
Onto number fourteen, general announcements. I'll wait and see if anyone else wants to go first. Councillor Ball.
I'm sure Mayor Gordon has this, but Midland Palooza's on Saturday with all of our operations department having the trucks in North Simcoe Rec Center parking lot. So I'm excited. I think I'm more excited than my kids about it. So I hope to see everyone there.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. I'll take that and throw some extra meat on the bone, but you're absolutely right, councillor Ball. So please, everybody, join us for our second annual Public Works Palooza on Saturday, May twenty fifth. This Saturday, it's a free community event in celebration of our Public Works heroes and National Public Works Week. They're all heroes to us. Join us at the Sports and Rec Center parking lot between eleven A M and two P M, eleven to two. You get hands-on learning and getting up and close with town vehicles. Maybe Dylan will let you dig a hole. No, okay, no, no digging holes, but you can still pull the levers. You learn cool information about town services, vehicles, how our water system works and more. You get to see Midland Fire. O P P and the Simcoe County paramedics, emergency service vehicles and all their neat toys and kit in there. They let you pull the horn and, you know, press the buttons, make the lights go. This year, we've expanded the event with the additional displays from N T Power and DriveWise. There's also going to be a free community barbecue. So bring your, your empty stomachs with you grilled by Enbridge Community Event Team. So cash donations in support of the Georgian Bay Food Network are greatly appreciated. Food is generously donated by Meatland, Midland Foodland and Midland's Real Canadian Superstore. Thank you so much. You guys are awesome. Come out this Saturday, May twenty fifth for fun, interactive displays, prizes, butter tarts, snacks and more. And check our community calendar on our website for more details. And then, not to be outdone, the kids' fishing derby fast approaching Saturday, June first, nine A M till noon at the Midland Town Dock. It's a catch and release event, so no, no fish frying going on here. There's no pre-registration and no cost for kids up to age sixteen. That's just the way we do it. Bring your own fishing gear, but each participant will receive free bait. And they'll also get a free hot dog and a juice box and a participation prize and a chance to win a new bike and helmet, also generously donated. Participants should wear a personal flotation device and, because the town doesn't provide life jackets. We want the kids to survive the event. We also encourage kids to wear a hat and sunscreen and bring a water bottle with you. And well, this is like, this is the big one. Ontario's Best Butter Tart Festival fast approaching too, Saturday, June eighth, the following Saturday, from nine A M to five P M, the sweetest day of the year. And it's our award-winning event that includes butter tart contests sponsored by Dairy Farmers of Ontario. Egg farmers. Oh, my goodness. Sorry. Egg farmers of Ontario. I'm very, very sorry, egg farmers. If I'm going to say it, I should at least say it right. There's a stage with live music all day, more than two hundred vendors and food trucks, plus all the downtown stores are open. And there's two hundred thousand butter tarts available for purchase, including butter tarts from the contest. And the Kid Zone is going to be back, which is awesome. And there'll be the piping of the tart with the Midland Pipes and Drums and our town crier will be there, just opening things up at nine A M. And free shuttles and free transit that day. So there's just absolutely no excuse. So you don't have to kind of park downtown in the mayhem, park at the Sports and Rec Center. Is it still going to be at the old Pillsbury Plant? Nope. Where's the other staging spot?
The two shuttle locations are going to be the, sorry, I've never remembered the name of the company. It's the old T R W on twelve Z F. And Z F and at the mall in, on highway ninety, sorry, County Road ninety three.
Right, yeah, it's, the other one's filled with, with GMC pickup trucks. Okay, so that's Butter Tart Festival. It's going to be crazy. It's busy. I know some residents just flee for their lives. But, you know, we welcome in tens of thousands. I think the last count was like fifty or sixty thousand people from all around North Simcoe and all around Ontario. So be patient that day. And of course, you could probably monetize parking in your driveway if you wanted, but. It's been done. Anyway, and lastly, we are first cruise, our first cruise ship visit of the year is May twenty ninth, May twenty ninth. And I think this isn't on here, but for those that were disappointed that we haven't done our top hat ceremony yet, have no fear. We couldn't do it because of this tight schedule. The last time the front neck was in, we were available, but the ships folks weren't. So the next time the front neck is in, we will do the top hat ceremony, which is a, if you want to learn more about that, Google or ping me offline, but it's a big deal. And we actually have Sir Playfair's hat. And we even have his brother's hat now, thanks to a donation from another local resident. Which is fantastic. We have a backup hat, as it were. We just got the Mr. Playfair's hat redone. So anyway. It's kind of neat. Lots of neat stuff going on, nautical themes. I know there's events going on around town. I'm overbooked. I'm overbooked this summer, so I'm spreading the wealth. Uh, Councillor Patel is doing uh, Blessing of the Fleet, I mean, I can go on and on here. Uh, there's a, a business relocation opening tomorrow, the Quarryors' new location. Uh, Councillor Bald is attending that on my behalf and with the big goofy scissors and, and uh, giving them certificate. Count, uh, Deputy Mayor Post is gonna be in our Canada Day Parade, cause I'm camping. Uh, so she's gonna be in the truck waving her hands, there's just so many cool things going on this summer and uh, council's all getting to, to have their fill of it, so. And I'll probably be deferring uh, some other appearances where I'm triple booked to the rest of council, so expect the email coming. Anyway, there I am, my long-winded announcements de jour.
Does anybody else have any announcements? Seeing none, I will move on to 15, motion to close. Committee of the whole and resume formal council session. You're good? Hold on, I haven't said it yet. Sorry, I can't do more than one thing at once at the, right now. Okay, um. Motion to close Committee of the Whole and to resume formal council session. RES-2, 2024-170, this is moved by Councillor Patel and seconded by Councillor Bald, that the Committee of the Whole rise and report. All in favor? Carried. It's all yours, Mayor Gordon.
Thank you very much, you get all the good stuff, eh? That's why I had the staff give me these announcements, by the way, I don't make this up. Cause I'm, I actually don't like to talk, I'm very shy and not talking of. Alright, I got a motion here, moved by Councillor Bald, seconded by Councillor Merrittis, that the recommendations that Committee of the Whole for the meeting of May 22nd, 2024 be adopted as resolutions of council, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Carried. Oh. Now we come to uh, motions for which notice was given and then I have one, which means I'm yielding the chair back to my Deputy Mayor. So there.
Okay, this is moved by Mayor Gordon, second, do I have a second? Councillor McDonald. That council support the first annual Mayor's Golf Tournament to be held on Friday, September 6th, 2024 at Brookley Golf and Country Club and that staff investigate the logistics of the tournament, including the planning, organizing and collecting of sponsorships, donations and that the startup funds for the initiative, this initiative be used from the council initiatives reserve. Will you have any comments or questions? Mayor Gordon?
Okay, so the reason why this is here, cause there's money involved. Uh, so I think everybody knew that we're gonna try and get this thing off the ground. Um, and my commitment was to try and do it with an able team of volunteers from the community and also council. Uh, we picked a date, we've got the Brookley Golf and, and Country Club has kindly volunteered their location uh, and their expertise, cause they run these things all the time and it's almost like a template. Uh, but there is al- always a chance that there's gonna be some money startup costs for this, although I'm not anticipating there be a lot. It's probably just gonna be in any staff time that may be attributed to this. My objective this year for this first one, and we're a bit late to the game, but we can still pull it off, is that uh, you know, we form basically the template of how this worked this year with largely council and volunteers driving the bus. And then we can hand that template over with all of our lessons learned to staff to run this thing next year and for subsequent years. And of course, the objective is to raise funds that effectively replaces tax dollars that goes into our community grants and it comes from the proceeds from this uh, from this golf, golf tournament. So we've got the framework laid out, we've had meetings, Councillor Patel was instrumental in this with me so far. I do have uh, two or three community volunteers, one that's arranging to help me get some uh, some NHL alumni to attend and uh, be part of the dinner where you can bid to uh, you know, sit at the table with them and maybe play a round of golf with them. Uh, and there's one, at least one big name, but I can't blab yet. But th- this is coming and this is all volunteer-driven. So the objective here is not to, to turn this into a big, you know, all of a sudden staff initiative, cause we didn't build this out of budget and then I'd be breaking my own advice by bringing this up midterm. But uh, just that if there is any startup costs, because somehow I can't collect the money that we're gonna start raising soon as I rattle the bushes and try and get sponsors, I can't touch that, none of, no, no one in council can, so we need a mechanism for staff to receive the credit cards or the checks or the e-transfers or the cash, whatever it is. So there's definitely need to be staff involvement, we're not reinventing the wheel, Tiny's been doing this for years. So effectively what we need is council's blessing to task staff with some of the preliminaries to call Tiny and say, hey, how do you guys do this? And so we can emulate it. Uh, if there is any staff involvement on the actual day of Friday, September 6th uh, to help us out, then some of it might be paid, some of it may be volunteered, but we need to expect there's gonna be some cost to that. And uh, this is just affirming that, you know, rather than me just talking about it with you guys, this is actually something that we're agreeing to do and fund and to kick off as a funding source for our community grants program moving forward. Uh, one little minor thing is I, I will be talking to uh, Scott Warnock at uh, HCF, He Man, He Mani Foundation and see if for the next year they're able to be the collector of the funds from this tournament, because then they can issue uh, tax receipts. Right now, when we're selling, you know, these sponsorships, they're giving town, town money with, they're not getting a tax receipt other than a pledge that we're gonna spend it on charitable things, which we are, but it still could be a more of an incentive if the money was all being handled through HCF, which could actually negate the whole community grants process with us, that's under conversation. But the key here is this is a new funding source that gets it off the tax roll. Um, and I'll need all your help for it, I'm a terrible golfer, but uh, we're gonna put together a small little team, get the framework nailed down and uh, involve staff as little as possible this year, cause I'm springing it on you and then, you know, just before summer. And uh, hand you guys a working template when we're done and figure out all the dumb things we did along the way, so we don't repeat them and it is gonna be a roaring success year after year moving forward. So there's my long-winded pitch as to what I'm looking for tonight.
Have I heard the motion? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Back to you, Mayor Gordon.
Thank you very much. Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Pro, seconded by Councillor Patel, that the following bylaws, bylaw 2024-32, adopt the estimates of all amounts required for the current year 2024 and to establish the rates of taxation for the current year 2024 and bylaw 2024-33, regulate the sale and setting off of fireworks within the town of Midland and to repeal count, uh, bylaw 2023-22 and bylaw 2024-34, regulate parking within town of Midland and to repeal bylaw 2021-24 and 2022-47 as amended, that relates to the Sixth Street stuff. Be passed and enacted. Any comments or questions, council? All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Next, moved by Deputy Mayor Pro, seconded by Councillor Bald, that the bylaw 2024-35, being a bylaw to adopt a proceedings of the regular council meeting held May 22nd, 24, be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And last but not least, moved by Councillor McDonald, seconded by Councillor Bald, that this regular meeting of council adjourned at 10:34 PM. All those in favor? But any opposed? Oh, I'm going by the computer clock. Alright, we're adjourned, thanks everybody.